To join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll please.
Belkey.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Clistic. Kenny.
Here.
Marques.
Here.
MacIver.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Six present, one absent.
We have a quorum. The next item is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Does anyone in the audience want to address the City Council on any items? Whether they're on the agenda this evening or not? And since we have such a large audience, I guess we'll just move right on here. Let's move on to the approval of the minutes of March twenty first, two thousand sixteen. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any additions or deletions for the clerk? I think you even spelt your name wrong in the minutes. Did you see that? You're Rogono, I think, in one point, on page ten.
I don't do the minutes, so I review them.
Any additions or deletions for the, in the minutes, from any of the Aldermen? With that exception, okay. Then the roll please.
Shower.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
MacIver.
Abstain.
Marques.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Six ayes, one absent, with the abstention going with the ayes.
Okay, the, do we have some individuals that are missing from the meeting tonight? Yeah, I was just noticing what's on the agenda this evening. We can, we can certainly move it back if, if we have to. Let's move to receiving of communications. Do any of the Aldermen have communications to share? Alderman Marques.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think you and I both received an email from Neil Christiansen today with, it was addressed to you and me.
I, you know what, I have to talk to someone because there's a couple of emails that I have not gotten. And when did, when did Neil send it?
I just got it this afternoon.
I did not get it. And I did not get one from Bonnie Cussera sent one regarding our homeowners association. I did not get that one either. So, they flowed through to our personal emails, correct? And I did not get those.
This was addressed at the Darien, but I got it through my own personal. Anyway, long and short of it, he addressed it to both of us. And he spoke to how difficult the year was for us in terms of developing a budget. But of his, a special concern to him was the additional tax on food and beverage, consumable food and beverage, and the impact it might have on filling the new shopping center as well as other businesses within the city of Darien.
He has an issue with us doing those taxes?
He has a concern about that.
A concern. Did he have suggestions on what we should do?
He, he had an appreciation for the process we had to go through, but he still had a concern about it.
I, I really appreciate it, and I think I've stated it before, and it's stated in the newspaper. Nobody on this council likes raising taxes, especially the one that, that affects our cities, our residents' property taxes. But when we want to keep the services that we deliver to our residents and they have come to expect, and we look out three years from now, we don't have the funds to cover all of those projects that our residents have come to appreciate and, and require. We have to do the responsible things. And that's why we came to the conclusions we did during the budget process. And I'm sure Neil, that's why he didn't come out in opposition to it, but he has concerns and we appreciate the, the comments. Anyone else, Alderman Belkey?
I received a call from a resident on the four hundred block of Seventy First Street. And he was commenting that he was fine with not keeping any money in for the Darien Fest, but felt that the Lions Club, or I'm sorry, the parade was a good use of city resources, so wanted to pass that along.
What was, what his reasons were for not wanting to fund Darien Fest?
The reason was, well, he was asking a little bit about, you know, the kind of people that it's been drawing, and then also just that there are different distinctions, distinctions between the Lions not taking any money in the chamber, you know, having money, raising money, so that was his distinction. Also, also, sorry, there's, there's another one I received from a resident on sixty eighth and Claretton Hills Road, and I know Dan's gonna help me chime in on this one. But this is something that she was asking as a follow-up. It was in the budget for a crosswalk on six, somewhere in the area of sixty seven.
And that individual happens to be here too this evening. She's one of the honorees that were, yes.
Well, then I can leave it to you. If you, if you, did we miss that, the opening of comments for the public already?
You certainly can make any comments.
We can address it later as well, but anyway, the plan was for Dan to kind of go over that with the council because it was a line item in the budget without a dollar amount, which to us means it's up for discussion. And in this case, what we want to do is kind of revisit just what the idea was and how much money we thought that it might take to, take it to the next step.
Just to clarify that, to ensure everybody's understanding, there was a few things Dan had put in as, as items that I took out, but I left the titles in. But the council had the opportunity to obviously leave that in. I was just a little confused because you said it has a chance then to be in, but the council, at this point, concur not to have that in.
Right.
Okay.
Any other, I, if no one else has communications, I received a letter from Marion Karpika, who was this year's Citizen of the Year, thanking us, Mayor Weaver and the City Council and the city officials and the committee for the honor that she received. It's a wonderful, wonderful event, and she was just very appreciative of, of the event and her nomination. I'll, I'll present that for the record. Other communications, go ahead, Alderman Belkey.
One more thing, I just thought someone else would bring it up, but this is the letter that I believe all of us got here in regards to the Woodmere Town Home Association. It was sent by attorney Gabriella Comstock.
Yes, and I responded to her and, you know, let her know that we will keep her in the loop as to how things go. You know, what, most of this is not in, well, we just got the permit, what, a couple of weeks ago?
When you say permit.
The application.
The, I mean, the application. But a lot of this is in the hands of the county, if I'm, if I'm understanding correctly.
And while that's true, I can provide a quick summary in respect to the property we're talking about. This is in reference to a property referred to as seventy eight, seventy nine Lamont Road, otherwise known as the Passapal property, or directly north of the Woodmere subdivision on the east side of Lamont Road. Currently, it is zoned as ORNI, which is Office Research, Office Research and Light Industrial. A warehouse is a permitted use. A firm has come in with a warehouse, with a warehouse plan. Currently, there's no variances they are seeking. We are under a review process of the existing plans, which includes site plan, the geometrics of the parking lots, the lighting, and the county, which is reviewing Lamont Road, is reviewing a left-turn lane for southbound Lamont Road. And they're also reviewing the right-only lane that will be coming into their facility, or their proposed facility, I should say. The lighting has been reviewed. The lighting candle power for this, I'll refer to it as the southern side of the proposed warehouse is basically at zero candle power at the property line. Now, when I say property line, if you can picture Woodmere, Woodmere currently has a six-foot wooden fence that beyond that fence is what is referred to as a property. Residents have referred to it as an easement. It's owned and maintained by NICOR. So it's not an easement, it is a piece of property with its own parcel identification number. Within that NICOR property is a gas main. Also, on that property is somewhat of a wooded area, not very densely wooded, but nonetheless, it is wooded area. NICOR has, or NICOR has a mandate on them back from the government in regards to clearing their property so there could be aerial, aerial views taken with biwood planes to inspect the pipelines. They're currently working on a, NICOR is currently working on a similar project on the south end of town. But meanwhile, the property directly north of Woodmere, otherwise known as the NICOR property, they have no specific plans for at this time. It's a matter of when they're gonna be clearing the property, not if. This area that I refer to is a hundred and twenty foot wide. We, city, have responded to the concerns of the, that were brought forth from the Woodmere Association representatives. We have also met with the, with the Woodmere Association president several weeks ago, I want to say it was back in February, along with a resident who currently backs the proposed subdivision as well. We have asked the developer at this point to help or try to accommodate from going to two-and-a-half-inch caliper trees to four-inch caliper trees. There was also a comment in respect to berming. A berm unfortunately is not, based on the elevation of the existing properties, a berm, unless it was a twelve-foot berm, will not have any significant impact on that development or screening effect back to the Woodmere subdivision. So a berm is really something that's not acceptable. Again, the lighting pollution, that was brought up as an issue. We, we as staff are not seeing that as a lighting pollution. Lighting pollution, also, the letter referred to some type of dangers that are on Lamont Road. We're unaware of any, and also we're leaving that back to DuPage County.
For the traffic.
For the traffic study, yes. So if there's anything else.
I think the other one was noise.
Noise, correct. And the noise, one of the, obviously, the trucks of today are a lot quieter than were in the past, if you want to say. Also, we, the city, have an ordinance on the books that says that you have to be at a certain decibel level in regards to, you know, noise. And again, we're a hundred and twenty foot away. If we picture a hundred and twenty feet, I would say it's basically the size of, from Plainfield Road all the way up to our fence back on the west side.
The one, the one thing, sorry, Mayor Weaver, but a couple of things, the, the developer was very forthcoming, was happy to meet with the president of the homeowners assoc, and there's two associations there. There's one sort of on the east and one on the west. So, it's, I think it's kind of the way it was developed, in two chunks. So, but we met with, or the, Dan and the developer met with the president of the homeowners association that's in question, as well as a resident. Now, the one thing I did suggest to Dan, and I don't know, you really haven't gotten, done anything with it yet, was to perhaps have a meeting where we ask the president of the association, you know, to send an invite to all their, you know, interested parties and maybe host either here or across this, you know, the parking lot. And just, you know, let them understand that, you know, because once that resident actually went through the process, he understood that, you know, it is, you know, it's not a rezoning. There's no variances so far requested, and the, the developer has been very cooperative with the city in trying to, you know, kind of manage some of their concerns.
Would they be, yeah, would they be presenting boards that have the, the display of, of the development that they're putting in?
They have provided us a concept plan at this point, wood-colored pictures, so if I can back up one moment, back to Sylvia's point, in respect to an invitation, I did send out to their legal counsel on my last email an invitation requesting them for dates. Where we, where we, the city, would be happy to entertain them at some type of, I'll call it a forum, question and answer, not a public meeting, obviously, but some type of.
That'd be great, yeah, see if they, if offer, want to do something like that. The hours of operation would be important to know of the, of the business that's going in there.
And currently, it's twenty-four hour operation.
That's what I was afraid of, yeah.
You know, again, with the noise level, that we have an ordinance in effect. We have asked them also, you know, we've looked at the site, the site plan, the geometrics of it. And again, the building has to be where the building is, just to max, I'll refer to it as, maximizing the business opportunity that they plan on putting in place there.
There's wetlands to the north of this property also, right?
There's quite a few wetlands. There's wetlands to the north, as well as back to the east.
So are there, they're going to be abutting those wetlands that can't go any farther than they're going?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's the other thing that's currently under review is the wetlands. Will it be a hundred fifty-foot buffer? Will it be a fifty-foot buffer? Again, that, we're gonna leave back to DuPage County as the wetland experts.
Okay, good.
With the warehouse, will the, the bay doors for their trucks be facing north, east, west?
Be facing east.
They'll be facing east?
Yes.
So the people that are actually abutting the Woodmere, would get the side of the building, and then the actual.
The residents in, in the Green Valley Street Road would be the ones that, and there's a, there's, how much of a wetland is between that and Green Valley Road?
Part of it.
It is, so I, I think it's far enough away from residents.
Which is owned by the forest, preserved directly to the east, to the east of the proposed warehouse.
You know how anti-development I am, and, you know, I mean, you can't really argue, you know, this isn't like, you know, other developments that get variances.
But what will happen is, is they're proposed, pending on the review process, to be coming forward to the next municipal services committee meeting. They are required only to have a site plan approval pending no variances. So I just wanted to clarify that for the city council.
Dan, does that site plan approval come before the council?
Yes, I'm sorry.
So that comes ultimately to the council, okay.
Yes.
Other rece, other communications, I believe you were all copied on the letter that I received from Mayor Tully and Mayor Cunningham regarding the donation, or our lack of donation to the fire, the Fourth of July fireworks, so we can discuss that at, at the point of, of the budget. So we can move on from here. Other communications, yes?
Yeah, I did receive a communication regarding NICOR work in Farmingdale Village. They had been, flags were showing up. We didn't know what was going on, and, you know, Dan investigated it and found out that it's NICOR that's doing work on the, on, basically on the, on their gas main.
Support of services, correct. I believe it was about a hundred.
They're approving, improving services, yeah.
Right, basically, they're switching them out from copper to the polyethylene.
But they didn't tell the city.
Correct, and there was, flags were showing off, so we reached out to NICOR, and, and they're scattered throughout the city of Darien. The list that was provided was provided back to all the, all the elected officials, and those residents were getting notifications.
Finally, yeah, after we prompted them.
They're already digging it up, because I, I drove by Park, Parkview, and it's, there's definitely already work taking place.
I think, yeah, you were the first ward that was targeted with the NICOR upgrades.
Also, Alderman MacIver, I was watching the communications with Alderman MacIver and, and Paul regarding another outage in Farmingdale Village. How many are, how many outages have we experienced to date in that area?
Well, I don't know about to date. I know it's been several that we've been communicating.
It's, it's, yeah, it sounds like we have to raise this to a higher level.
Well, you know, this is kind of what we were anticipating when, whatever, ten years ago, we were dealing with COMED, because that service in, in that section of the, the city originates in Lisle. And all of that is over, you know, the high power comes via overhead into Darien. And what we found out ten years ago is that, you know, COMED being reactive and not proactive wasn't performing the tree trimming that was necessary for these devices to communicate to each other if there's an outage, so that they could automatically switch over to a different service in the event of an outage. So my concern is that now ten years have passed. I mean, we, we had COMED's feet to the fire to make sure, you know, and now you see this more and more. And, and over, you know, you can see in a storm or something like that, but this is like random. You know, a nice sunny day, all of a sudden the power's out, you know? And I'm just concerned that the infrastructure needs some attention and that, you know, that we have this turnover of COMED reps.
Do we have Ken Seaton anywhere? Is it, is it, that's what I thought.
No. We haven't used anybody since the law, since we've litigated against.
And we, and we, you know, we've got a new, Terry Simon, yeah, Terry's gone, so
Correct.
we need to, we need to get them, give them the parameters of what kind of report we're looking for, or answers.
And I'm, I'm concerned, you know, citywide. I don't know how other wards are, you know, I remember Alderman Poteraski's board was always at risk.
And that's, that goes to my point, that I think over, overall, the city, we have improved, dramatically improved service from COMED. And here we have an issue now raising its head.
It's just, you know, it's, it's a pattern, you know, you start seeing it little by little, and then, you know, pretty soon it's something major and.
So I don't, I, I think we need an answer to what's going on in Farmingdale Village, and, and then an overall report on, on service with. How, how often were they providing us with reports? I, I know that we were giving them on a regular basis.
Well, we'd, we'd get them manually. They would notify us every time there's an outage. And I do have some answers for Alderman MacIver regarding some of the outages. And I talked to our new representative today, and he will be at one of the May meetings to discuss the annual report.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's time. I think we, just, just to keep them.
Yeah, give them, give them, yeah, give them, give them more.
Well, they were here last year as well.
Give them more tasks to do, to give us some responses to what's going on in Farmingdale Village.
Sure.
You know? Okay, so they're gonna go over their annual report in May?
Correct.
Cool. What's the name of the new representative?
Philip Halliburton.
Okay, thank you. No, yeah. Well, Terry Simas was with us for quite a while, so, and she was very responsive to.
Oh, yeah, Katie.
Katie Meyer, yeah. We've had some pretty responsive people, so. Any other communications to share? You all have, I just mentioned that you had the letter from the two mayors, mayors of Downers Grove and and Woodridge, that we can discuss when the, the budget comes up for discussion. Let's move, now that we have, let's move to the mayor's report. If there's no other communications to share. And we have a District sixty-one, we have an honoree with us this eve, this evening, Ms. Lauren Casberger. And I think someone, Almar, Mar, Mayor Chiaro is going to present, make the presentation?
Yes. I'll speak for a little bit, just kind of fill you in on the program and the foundation a little bit. I am, my name is Mary Chiaro. I'm a member of the Darien District sixty-one Educational Foundation, and we have some members with us here as well. Jane Moss is our, a member and our school board representative. And Croissant, I think you are familiar with, and Bonnie.
Bonnie Cussera, yes.
And our mission is, we're a nonprofit organization. Our mission is to provide supplemental funding, uh, funding to the school district for programs and initiatives to enhance the quality of education in District sixty-one for their students. And that's in the schools of Mark Delay, Lace Elementary School, and Eisenhower Junior High. And we primarily do that through annual grants and mini-grants that we give out throughout the year. But we also run a special program. It's three years old now. It's called Great Starts in District sixty-one, is the official title. And every year, we have an honoree. It's a recognition award. And we honor a former student who's been, who's gone through education in the district that's gone on to do some interesting, important, really fascinating things with their lives. And it's kind of like a Hall of Fame, except it's not. We take the Hall of Fame, end of career, and we shove it down in the beginning. So we recognize people early on in their careers. And part of the reason we do this is to provide inspiration for the students who are in the district currently. So this year, I am proud to, to introduce to you Ms. Lauren Casberg. Let me tell you a little bit about her, and a little bit about our in-classroom program, and then I'll turn it over to her because I want her to, to say a few words. I don't want to hog the whole stand here. But she is the legal director of the Chicago office of the Illinois Innocence Project. And if any of you are familiar with that, that's a nonprofit organization that represents individuals who maintain that they have been wrongly convicted and imprisoned. So she's doing some pretty important work. In fact, last year, in two thousand fifteen, two of her clients were exonerated and set free. One had been in prison for, was it twenty-nine years, and the other for twenty, twenty-one years. And just this past January, she was able to walk alongside another client who had been wrongfully imprisoned for eighteen years and walk him out of prison. So it's some pretty important public service work that she's done. She came to the district in seventh and eighth grade. She went to Eisenhower Junior High. After moving into the district, she was very involved in choir and student council and was very impactful there. And also, and I hope she'll talk about this, those activities, those extracurriculars were very impactful on her as well. So, as part of the Great Starts program, we have an in-classroom component. It's not just recognizing these, these fine students. We actually bring it into the classroom so that the students can connect, and we provide the teachers with all the talking material that they need. And we were lucky this year that Lauren was able to come in and talk to the students. So not this past week, because that was spring break, but the week prior to that, she was in the classrooms. She was able to talk to fourth and fifth graders at Lace Elementary School. She talked to them about our legal system and also what it's like to be a lawyer. She's been invited, now that school started back up again, she's gonna be at Eisenhower to talk with students during Career Day. She'll be doing a little bit of reading with the general, which is actually one of the mini-grants we funded this year. It's a reading program at Eisenhower. It takes place at the lunch hour. She'll be doing some of that, and I think also some additional classroom visits for the students. We're very honored that she accepted this award, and I'll turn it over to her.
Before you leave, Mayor, did you, do you have a plaque or something so we could, we could put her on our, our, yeah, our, our board, our, our board upstairs?
I didn't realize, I didn't realize I could do that. We awarded it to her during our own little ceremony, but I'll run home and get it.
Do you have a photo that we, you could share with us of that event, so that we could put her on our, our board upstairs? Our wall of fame, our wall of fame?
Yes, we were up there just, just earlier. Sorry we were late. But yeah, I'll, I'll bring it by.
Very good, thank you. You can send it to Brian, or Paul, the photo, I mean.
That'd be great.
Okay, Lauren, thank you for coming, yes.
Thank you for having us here and for supporting this program. I said to Mary, it's really full circle for me, because I really had an incredible experience as a student at Eisenhower Junior High. Not only was I sort of, I felt really embraced by the teachers there and the schooling, and really fostered curiosity in me as a student for the first time, but the extracurricular opportunities that I had were really incredible. As mentioned, I was involved with the student council as well as choir, and that was at the time when we were in Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat, and got to just really experience all these things that really exposed me to the world and gave me a voice. And in the student council activities that I was involved in, really felt for the first time how great it felt to give back and to be part of the larger community and to be engaged. And I think when I look back on my life, those are the times that set me off on my path to do something where I wanted to give back. And, you know, when I think about the classroom, what I shared with some of the students was, you know, at the time, I always felt like I wasn't very good at science or math, but now I work with DNA every day with our cases. So those exonerations that were mentioned were based on DNA that proved that these individuals were innocent. And so it was really nice to be able to share with students that they should just, you know, take in what they learn. You never know what's going to come back to you, as all of you guys have probably experienced in your lives as well, and it's a great honor. And I now, I lived away for a long time through college and undergrad, and I went to law school in New York, and then moved back to Chicago, and just recently, as Mr. Gombach is aware, I moved back to Darien.
I think we know where you live.
And I have a little, and as you know, yes, and I'm engaged and active, and I have that voice. But it's true, I mean, I do like being able to communicate with all of you. I think I emailed back to Mr. Vanna the other day how great it is to send an email and get responses back from all of you so quickly. And I think that is definitely something that I learned at Eisenhower and through District sixty-one, and now I'm here today, so thanks.
Now, Lauren, I think the Innocent Project, Innocence Project is affiliated with Northwestern University.
There's several, so there's actually an Innocence Network around the country. I'm actually with the Illinois Innocence Project, which is based at the University of Illinois Springfield. But I manage, and most of our northern county cases in Illinois, so I'm based out of this area.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, but so there is a Center on Wrongful Convictions out of Northwestern. And then when I went to law school, I went to school at Cardozo Law School in New York City, which is where the Innocence Project was founded. So there's projects all over the country, and actually all over the world now. It's really interesting.
Lauren, what, what motivates you guys to look at a particular case?
So we receive letters from people who write to us from prison and say, I'm innocent, please help me. And then we send back questionnaire, which is very, very lengthy. And we have a unique program where we work with undergraduate students at the University of Illinois Springfield who do case evaluations that are incredibly extensive. And they'll involve reviewing all of the documents that we can obtain, as well as potentially visiting with the inmate, and trying to really get a full, complete picture of the case. And if we believe that there's an articulable claim of innocence and that there's evidence that we could get to prove it, primarily with DNA or other forensic re-investigation, we'll take on the case, so, yeah.
Fascinating. Any other questions?
Actually gets kids interested in other areas of science, like forensics.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and it's, it's really great to work with the undergraduate students, but then we occasionally will have high school students who reach out to us who see, especially when we have a high-profile exoneration, like last year. You know, there was two people from the Chicago area, so one of my clients, Chris Abernathy, was from Park Forest. Was seventeen years old when he was arrested by the police and believed to have committed this crime, which twenty-nine years later, DNA evidence proved that he didn't commit. And so there's this sort of this newspaper blast that happens when a big case like that comes out. And so the public becomes more aware of wrongful convictions and causes, and we'll get some folks who are. And we'll get some folks who'll reach out to us. And part of what we do too is policy reforms and try to work with, I mean, we work with police training institutes and other organizations that can, you know, really have the impact on the world after we learn from the cases where a mistake has been made. We try to take that and push forward and try to make the system better and more fair.
Well, Lauren, you said you're affiliated with the Innocence Program, Project at University of Illinois Springfield. Do you spend most of your time down there?
No, I'm actually up here most of the time, but I go to Springfield like once a month or as often as I can and spend a little bit too down there.
We have to get you involved in the city here.
I know, and get them ready, yeah.
Yes. We, we have an application that you can call Brian's, Brian's office and complete. It's got committees and commissions that we have. And when there's openings, we, we love to consider new individuals for, for them.
Great, that sounds great.
Okay.
I think Brian's got my email.
I think we all, yeah, I've got it too, yeah.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Lauren, that's well deserved.
Thank you, I'm very honored, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Let's move to the city clerk's report.
Just one item, Madam Mayor. The meet and greet with Mayor Weaver will take place on Monday, April the 18th at 6:00 PM here at City Hall in the upstairs conference room.
City administrator's report?
No report, Mayor, thank you.
Let's move to department head information or questions.
I have a quick report, Mayor.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, residents here this evening, and our general viewing residents at home. A couple of things. First thing I want to remind everybody that brush pickup begins on the week of April 25th and will continue through the 29th. So while we realize there's been a lot of wind activity lately, we realize that residents are putting the brush out prior to the two weeks as we typically request. But we understand the situation that's been in hand for the last several weeks. So while residents are putting it out there, please keep in mind not to be blocking sites of view, especially coming out of driveways and/or roadways. And again, the first pickup is April 25th through the 29th. Second thing is, again, we talked about briefly about 78, 79 Lamar Road, the proposed warehouse. As I said prior to, it appears that this, if the review process comes in with no significant mandates or changes or anything from the county, this will be undertaken at the next Municipal Services Committee meeting, which is April 25th at 6:30 here at the City Council chambers. Next thing is the I-55 Managed Lane. This project appears to be moving quicker than, than I had anticipated or anyone else at this point. There's a forum that's gonna be held within the next several days, and that is referred to as the Noise Forum. Now, the Noise Forum, there's postcards that are being circulated out there. First of all, let me go over the Noise Forum for when it's gonna be taking place. The first one is around this area, is April 6th, and that's from 5:30 to 7:30 PM, and that's in Burr Ridge. It's gonna be, it's located at Burr Ridge Middle School. And the address there is 15 West 451 91st Street. And again, that's April 6th from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. The second one, which will be adjacent to us, is April 7th. Again, same timeframe, April, excuse me, 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM. And that's gonna be located at Thomas Jefferson Junior High School, which is at 7200 Janes Avenue. What this is, is it tells, it'll tell residents or the general public what the noise wall is. What is the criteria for it? And speaking about the criteria, that's what I want to touch base on next. Based on the requirements, the states or the federal mandates are that there's receptors that are put in place. These receptors are basically how close to the highway or the real impact to certain residents. Typically, the limits are approximately 300 feet from the edge or the highway itself. Throughout Darien, and this is a rough count, I'm still waiting for confirmation through the Illinois Department of Transportation, the sound wall for the city of Darien is basically involves our entire corridor. But with that said, there's a vote on this. The votes are coming from the affected residents or the receptors. I have figured that there's approximately 700 residents, property owners or receptors, if you want to say, that are getting these postcards. The postcards are starting to come via to these 700, roughly 700 residents.
About the two meetings?
Not, not about the two meetings, just informational as well as the meetings as well. There's a website through Illinois Department of Transportation, which is on our direct connect that takes people, takes residents or anyone who's looking for information right to their website. Actually, it's a very good website on the I-55 Managed Lane project. In respect to this, these receptors, there has to be more than 50% of votes in favor of this wall. A response rate is 33%. So in other words, of the 700, approximately 700 residents, 350 would be required to vote, of which 115 would need to be in favor of the wall. So these votes are gonna be very important. We're gonna make sure that we continue to provide information via direct connect. Also, we'll see if we have the opportunity to capture the addresses of these receptors and send individual, potentially individual letters out to the residents or property owners. Now, one more important thing is that residents or property owners that are adjacent to Frontage Road will have the opportunity, opportunity to put two votes out there. So it's, it's a very interesting concept at this point.
I think I'm being a little bit confused about the word receptors. It sounds like this is a household or an individual. I, I got the impression that they were gonna be putting out some kind of receptor to hear the noise levels at certain points.
Correct. I think it's a, it's a little bit of a misconception, if you want to say. But the way I've been reading it and understanding it is that the receptors are the property owners.
So they're going to be telling, they're gonna be telling the, this managed program how, how loud it is? What are they telling them?
They're basically, there's a criteria. And IDOT has now established, through these receptors, that the decibel level, decibel level has been decreased by a minimal of five, five decibel levels. And it's approximately 300 feet from each direction of the highway itself. So.
But the receptors will be the ones voting, Dan, you're saying?
Yes, yes. We're saying the same thing, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, I'm confused, and how?
The receptors are the.
How the receptors are gonna, how do they know the decibel levels?
No, I think that he's saying that they, they vote on the wall going up.
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's what they're gonna do?
Yes.
Okay.
When are they gonna vote then?
So it's not based upon the noise level at the house at all?
Well, it is, it's based on the 300 feet and where the five, the decibel level of five is decreased. At a certain point, it becomes useless.
I, I get, I get it.
The wall itself.
We discussed this when we had the sound wall issue, that, you know, the sound actually, when, with the sound wall, the residents that live right next to it will be a benefit. But the wall, the sound now carries even farther into the community, because it bounces over the wall.
And that depends how the sound wall is set up. That's why you'll see on highways, you'll see different levels of walls, or you see one wall behind another wall just to curtail that effect. And there's been new studies out there over the last, since the last time we had this at City Council, which I believe was close to eight years ago, 10 years ago?
10 years ago.
Okay. So there's, there's new studies out there, there's new ways and means of conducting these studies. So it's very interesting.
Because the sound in Farmingdale has gone up, I mean, exponentially when they put up the ramp at 355 and 55, which is way above any sound wall. I mean, if you look at the elevation of that, it just spills into that part of Darien.
No kidding, see?
Oh, my gosh.
That's, that's the way the sound travels.
So Dan, basically they're saying from the edge of the highway, 300 feet in. And those are the people that'll get, that are the quote receptors.
Correct.
And you're talking, and Darien's in the enti, the entire Darien corridor would have a wall. So on, on the east, as far east as you could go would be what, Route 83?
Well, route, when you say Route 83, that's really out of our limits by that time. So you're looking at approximately Clardenhills Road.
Clardenhills Road, Cass.
Up to Lamar Road.
Up to Lamar.
Right.
And 300 feet in.
Correct.
On both sides of the road?
Yes.
Now, there are homes, there are homes, here's Hinswood again. There, Hinswood has homes that with, are within 300 feet. So they would be getting letters, they would be getting these receptor notices as well.
Correct. Now, I'm gonna clarify, I want to clarify with the states, the receptors, and are they considered voters? Or what exactly does that mean? It's a little bit of some loose terminology yet.
How do they group them for the voting blocks? Because I mean, you know, you.
Each property owner has.
Right, but I mean, what are they gonna skip a section of the wall? I mean, when do they make the determination that the wall's going up or not going up? You know, how, and how, what kind of links?
Is it, is it an all or nothing thing?
Well, I won't say it's an all or nothing. That's, I, I don't have the answer today. So let's say that we have 50% participation in one area and zero participation in another quadrant. Or we're overlapping into another municipality.
Like Woodridge.
Exactly. So, you know, and Woodridge has been very vocal in attending these management lanes. Right, so.
Our, our, our Carriage Greens, our Pinehurst, all those areas will be very vocal. I mean, those people are the ones at Tara Hill there.
Pinehurst might be too far away, but I know the Carriage Greens area will definitely.
Will definitely.
And on the website itself, it's really hard to, to realize or to determine which properties are in or out. But I-55 Managed Lane website has an area that's shaded of where the proposed receptors and the proposed sound wall is going to be.
Now, we're talking the east, we're talking the north and south side, because I read something on, on the Illinois Managed Lane site that said there would be no sound wall by the Public Works facility.
That is true. On the Public Works side, yes, there's no, there's no residents right there, there's a forest preserve there, and there's some commercial there. And then it's the Timberlake residents that are also there. So that becomes, you know, their voice back to IDOT. Again, I'm, we're not sure what their voice is.
But we have, but we have Darien residents in my ward who live on the other side of I-55.
Correct, and those are included.
Those would be included, okay.
They're west of Cass Avenue though.
Correct, they're west of Cass Avenue.
And we, we basically had, we pulled together all the research that we had for association contacts and forwarded those to IDOT. So I think we have everybody, you know, included and well-publicized to our fullest extent.
So you said something about us, we would create a letter that would go out to these same people.
City staff would be, you know, would try to get involved and determine who these receptors are or property owners and say, "Hey, this is very important to the city. Make sure when you get this postcard that you take a look at it."
Encouraging them to vote.
Correct.
Would, will you put something on our city website?
Probably.
Put something in our Darien data?
It's a limited, again, we have to take a look at other logistics. It's a limited number of residents, really, in the grand scheme of things. Nonetheless, it's a very important issue. But those 700, approximately 700 residents are really the ones we want to make sure that were affected. So it's a combination maybe of direct connect, maybe a combination of cable. But I think the letters are gonna be something that's gonna be more important in this case.
So it's, it's gonna be a get out the vote kind of thing?
Yes.
It looks like, you know, according to their mapping, they're picking up just like the first maybe row of homes that are along the highway and possibly across, because these receptors are not at every location. It looks like they're, you know, on this map, there's like three.
And when you look at the receptors, you'll see the recept, while they have the receptors, it's categorized as 350 or 150, whatever the case is.
Dan, what is the managed road program? What is that gonna be?
The managed lane is basically taking the inside lane. And so this, as far as I know, it's gonna be, well, one thought process was a tollway. Or pay as you go. I'm not sure what the final concept is, but it's somewhere along those lines. There's also the potential of having this privately funded. So it's, it's somewhat of a new concept here in Illinois.
Privately funded?
But basically, it's the, yes, they're looking at, they were talking about having private funds and call it a managed lane through private funding.
So you'd pay to go faster on the highway?
Correct.
That's what, that's.
Correct. And this is all on the inter, on the inside lane.
That's where the buses are allowed, well, it's the shoulder, actually. They get to use the shoulder.
Right, so there's really not a lot of construction.
Not a width, they're not expanding?
There may be a couple areas. And when I say a couple areas, it depends on how the exchanges or exits, ingress, egress are gonna be constructed to enter these zones.
They don't want to do any work, any more bridge work, because if they were expanded at those bridges, they'd have to expand the bridges. So you're probably talking about only using what's there already.
Correct. The majority of cases, yes. But there's also a project coming up, we just got notification on it today. I believe it's from three, I want to say it's from 355 back down to the city or close to, to Wool Springs Road, I believe. Doing construction, start in July, sometime in July, resurfacing projects, some minor bridge deck repair. Again, and we'll get it, we'll get all that information out. I just received something today, I didn't get a chance to really review it.
Was K-5 the contractor on that?
I don't even know if it's been let yet. There's something about July letting or a May letting, so I.
I got some notice from IDOT, so I wasn't sure.
K-5 is, K-5 is on Plainfield Road, which will be starting, that's the other thing, April 18th. Recently, we attended the road construction project for Plainfield, which involves the water main as well as road improvements, the traffic signal, which I mentioned last time.
Bailey Road.
Bailey Road, right, that's Bailey Road and Plainfield is the traffic signal. So we'll be looking at starting that April 18th. As we get closer, we'll make sure we put something on direct connect. Obviously, the weather has been a little bit to the, doesn't warrant construction work yet.
It's snowing outside. Anything else for Dan? Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Chief, did you have a report? No?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval, warrant number 151622 in the amount of $203,267.77. Payroll for the period ended March 17th in the amount of $243,099.13 for a total to be approved of $446,366.90.
Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Shower. Any questions for the treasurer?
Quick question, Mayor, since we didn't have a work session on this proportion. Illinois paper and copier, I see a contract in a look, maybe it's a typo, but it's a $94 contract for March 18th through April 17th?
Right, we pay a monthly, instead of paying an annual service contract, we pay a monthly. And then there's a per-page charge once you exceed a certain amount. We did not exceed that amount, so that would be our typical base charge. And, and that's all yet.
Any other questions for the treasurer? Then the roll, please.
Belzak?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
McIver?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Six ayes, one absent.
The warrant has been approved. Let's move to standing committee reports. Alderman Marques?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, at its last meeting, the Municipal Services Committee approved and submitted to the clerk's office the minutes of the March 17th, 2016 Municipal Services Committee meeting. And as Mr. Gombach mentioned, the next meeting of the Municipal Services Committee is April 25th, 2016 at 6:30 here in the council chambers.
What date was that?
April 25th.
Thank you. Alderman Shower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The minutes from the February 1st Admin Finance Meeting have been approved and submitted to the clerk's office. And our next Admin Finance Meeting will be held on Monday, May 2nd, 2016 at 6:00 PM in our upstairs meeting room.
Thank you. Alderman, McIver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The meeting of the Police Committee is scheduled for Monday, April 18th at 6:00 PM in the Training Room in Police Department, pending agenda items. But I will not be able to be at that meeting, so I don't know if we've got a quorum with the other two.
I won't be able to make it either.
Okay, so we may have to pick a different date then.
Okay, do you want to come up with the date and get, get the date out?
Send something out.
Okay, alrighty.
I'm not sure about agenda items yet, so we'll review that.
Yeah, that makes a big difference whether we have a meeting or not. Okay, so Police Committee is off on the 18th, alrighty. Let's move to questions, comments, agenda-related. Does anyone in the audience want to address the council on any of the items that are on the agenda this evening? Neil Christensen is in the audience. I bet I know what you're talking about.
I got home in time.
Did you hear my comments?
Yes. That's why I'm here. I was not able to be here at 7 o'clock for the discussions about the budget. First and foremost, I know a lot of time and energy is put in by this council to try and make, you know, create a balanced budget. And, and I do respect your efforts and everything. And, and I do respect your efforts and everything else, but I do have a few concerns. As a home road municipality, even though we are less than twenty-five thousand, the council has certain taxing authorities that a non-home road would have. Several years ago, I'm not sure if it was ten, twelve years ago, I don't have the data in front of me, but the city of Darien implemented a one percent sales tax. A few years ago, I wanna say four or five years ago, the city council implemented a utility tax, which affected everybody's utility bills, including school districts, library district, fire departments, park district, which is near and dear to my heart, because I'm a commissioner for the park district. It affected the community center and the biggest u- utility user in the city, the sports place. About eighteen months ago, you approved a gambling tax. Now, according to the state of Illinois, uh, website, last year that gambling tax generated a hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of revenue for the city of Darien. Tonight, you're, you're looking at a proposed budget where you're, you're gonna be increasing a water tax, which I totally understand. This is Rahm Emanuel passing on, you know, his cost to you, I have no problem with that. But also, we have a two cents per gallon gas tax. But most concerning to me is a one and a quarter percent tax for food and beverage consumed on premises. Since we redeveloped the strip mall on Cass Avenue, we're looking for a coffee shop, a sandwich shop, you know, something that would be kind of somebody, an ice cream parlor, that we gather there. And yet, we're telling potential tenants, oh, by the way, our budget needs some help, so we're gonna increase the tax on that. I think that's wrong. You know, to me, we, we, we have a tendency, if you look at the state, you look at the federal government, there's a tendency always looking at, well, here's what we need, let's look at the income side, what do we have to do to make our budget balance? But ultimately, I think what we have to do as elected officials is say, we have to look at both the income side and the expense side. What do we have to do? I really feel sorry under the tax cap era, and I'm a commissioner for the park district, but we really don't have union contracts. But what about the school districts? And, and entities like that that have to live within the tax cap, and, and there's no, nothing that they can do outside of that tax cap. I think you really start, need to start focusing on living within the tax cap. I, I hear that, oh, we don't wanna increase taxes to the Darien taxpayers, but I think we could all accept it better if we knew that, well, okay, fine, this is within the tax cap, we're living within, but when you go outside of the tax cap, even if my, my share of tax is going to the city of government, uh, city of Darien, it's not going up, at least I can accept that, that we're living within the tax cap. But when you bring in all these additional taxes, I think it's discouraging businesses from, to relocating here. And, and, and I think, you know, ultimately, um, it's something I would ask that you consider, so, thanks so much. I, you guys do a great job, I really respect everybody on the council. Um, but, but I think particularly the restaurant tax or the food and beverage tax is really unfair and not good for business, thanks.
Thanks, Neil, thank you for your comments. Does anyone else in the audience want to address the council? Oh, that's right, I forgot.
Thank you, I know it's a long meeting, so I'll be as brief as I can. Um, I, Lauren Caseberg, I live, um, at sixty-eighth Street and Clarendon Hills Road. Um, last summer, so the summer of twenty fifteen, I reached out to Alderman Belkey and to Mr. Gombach about the possibility of getting a crosswalk put in that would cross the road at Clarendon Hills Road, somewhere between sixty-seventh Street and Plainfield Road. So if you think about that strit, that stretch of Clarendon Hills Road, there's a sidewalk that runs along the west side of the street. But the east side, there's no sidewalk, and there's no crosswalk at sixty-seventh Street, there's that stop sign, but it only goes north-south, so no one stops going east and west. And I have a little boy who's gonna be four soon, so last summer, we spent a lot of time waiting, trying to find a safe way to cross, and it's just impossible. And as I sit at that corner house, I see kids on bikes constantly going and sort of darting through cars. It's amazing how cars do not stop, even though I'm standing there with a three-year-old at the time, a dog, a tricycle in one hand, trying to get across. And there's just absolutely no way to get across the street there, to access the sidewalk on the other side of Clarendon Hills Road. And I know that there had been a study done with a request that was made in relation to Roger Road at one point, and that was an issue, I believe, that dealt with the access to the entrance of Community Park. And there were residents who were near Roger Road who said it was unsafe because people were just crossing to get into that main entrance. But my request is very different from that, it deals with further north on Clarendon Hills Road. And I know Alderman Belkey is, we all live, anyone who lives on the east side of Clarendon Hills Road, between that area, there's no way to get across the street if you're on foot, um, without either walking in the shoulder, which is extremely dangerous. There's a lot of bicycle riders who go that way as well. Um, and so my request is like, the most cost-efficient way, whatever way it could be done with the least amount of money spent, I think residents would really appreciate if a crosswalk with just one of those little signs in the middle was put somewhere at sixty-seventh Street. Maybe it makes sense because there's already stops in there, maybe somewhere further south, but somewhere in that stretch just to give people a way to get across the street in a safe way, because I see kids always going across the street. And it really, our heart stops every now and again, because we're like, and there's a lot of accidents that happen right at sixty-seventh and Clarendon Hills anyway, so.
I, I don't think, I don't think there's a lot of accidents, but there are accidents here, yeah.
I should say my own, yes, yes, not knowing the numbers, yeah.
A crosswalk is something that's pa- painted on the roadway, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and we know today's drivers don't pay attention very often, so I don't know how effective it would-
Crosswalk warning sign, too.
Well, and again, if I may take an opportunity to comment on it, we did look into the situation, there was two different studies that we looked at. The first one was at sixty-seventh and Clarendon Hills Road, as well as a mid-block, uh, uh, crosswalk potential study. Both of those studies are independent of each other, uh, they may have been incorporated into one project, and the city council chose to pick the sixty-seventh and Clarendon Hills Road one. Uh, but regardless, uh, a cro- a mid-block crosswalk is, is something that is not recommended by the traffic engineers, and especially on Clarendon Hills Road, on Clarendon Hills Road particularly, uh, again, and without not seeing the study and, or without, without not conducting the study, there could be some type of pedestrian signalization that would have to be incorporated for a mid-block crosswalk. What does that mean? Is it a stop sign? Is it a flashing signal? Is it's, uh, uh, just a basic sign in the middle of the roadway? So there's various treatments for it, uh, but again, a, a study would have to be conducted to make sure that it was the most ultimate and optimum, um, measure in place.
When you say mid blo- mid-block, you said mid-block, right?
Yes.
I think what you're saying is that it's mid-block because only on one side of the street is there an intersection. On the west side of the street, there isn't, uh, uh, an equal intersection.
Well, it's partially-
Because that's, I'm, I'm thinking of sixty-eighth Street al- already. Uh, you, at sixty-eighth Street, there, you're, you're, you would be putting a crosswalk right into somebody's driveway.
That's partially correct, a, um, a crosswalk of such is something where there's no controlled signals currently in place. So Plainfield and Clarendon Hills Road is a controlled, uh, signalized intersection which has the capability. So between Plainfield and sixty, or even sixty-third Street, there really is no crosswalk.
Dan, years ago, when we used, when I was on, we used to talk about warrants, the, the warrant had to justify a stop sign.
Right.
And we used to tell residents that if the warrant doesn't justify a, a stop sign, we really can't put one there because there's a liability factor involved. Is there a warrant criteria for a crosswalk as well? And is there a liability for the city if they put a crosswalk in and then somebody was hurt at that crosswalk?
I think there's a liability regardless of what we do or don't do, um, you know, depending on the situation. And in respect to warrants, that's why this is a study which would incorporate what is the daily traffic count? What are, what are, I don't wanna say demographics, but the geographics, meaning the park, for example. Um, so there's a lot more into it than just the basic counts.
Dan, I think the consultant mentioned, although it's, it's obviously not the optimal travel way, that the light is at Plainfield, and that's where-
Correct.
That's where currently he would expect people to go and cross to the park.
I guess, yeah, my question is how-
There's no sidewalks on the east side of the street for people to get to either intersection.
Not right down Clarendon Hills, correct, it's a rural-
No, but how would you get to Plainfield, like, there's absolutely no way to actually do that if you live without walking in the street.
Short of taking High Road, correct.
Right, or going east-
But even then, you're in the middle of the street, there's no sidewalks throughout that entire part of Darien, so it is, I mean, that's a safer way to go. And that's what we usually do, is try to go down High and then go over to sixty-seventh, because at least you can try to cross that way. But if you're even going the other direction, like, if we wanted to go walk by the cemetery or something, you know, there's no way to ever get there without walking in Clarendon Hills Road.
And it's limited number of sidewalks, it's, uh, again, there's areas or homes, properties, that will have a segment fronting their residence, and two more lots in the north, that'll be just the grassy area, a sidewalk again for one lot. And again, the sidewalk that's currently in place, uh, would have to be removed and replaced regardless in order to, you know, if there was a full sidewalk plan eventually.
There, there is no crosswalk at this point, now, at sixty-seventh and Clarendon Hills Road.
Correct.
That's the only logical place that one could be put in, uh, along that stretch.
And again, if that was done, I would highly recommend that a study would be done, which again, that was a partnership-
Didn't you say we've already had two studies, and wasn't one of them for sixty-seventh?
Correct, we've had a study for sixty-seven several years ago, but that was more so for a traffic signalization, not a pedestrian crosswalk. But in the study, the proposed study, a pedestrian crosswalk is something else that would have been looked at.
Is there a partial sidewalk on the southeast side?
There's a sidewalk-
And right in front, is that Mangerele's House?
Yes.
Yeah, that's Bob Mangerele's House.
We call it the sidewalk to nowhere.
Right, I'm, I'm just looking like, to logistically, say in a perfect world, you put in, you know, you, you had a crossing there, is there a, could you do a sidewalk to sidewalk crossing there?
You mean on the east side from-
Right at sixty-eighth Street though.
Yeah, uh, sixty-seventh Street.
Oh, sixty-seventh, no.
Sixty-seventh.
Well, the cro- there is a crosswalk that, I mean, a sidewalk, excuse me, that is on the east side of Clarendon Hills Road that ends at sixty-seventh Street.
Right.
Right.
But it's like, it just is like this little trunk down-
Well, then, that's-
On the south, south of, south of sixty-seventh.
Then, south of sixty-seventh, there may be a teeny one, I don't even know if there is in there, yeah.
I'm just saying, it's like that action.
Yeah, it's so weird. Yeah, yeah, I've seen that.
And in conjunction with the, the sidewalk that would need to be put in the east side of Clarendon Hills Road, if you were to put a sidewalk in there, there's some, a lot of challenges, those challenges are the existing ditches that are in place.
Yeah, we'd have to take a private property to put a sidewalk in.
Now, can you touch upon what Willowbrook was asking us to do this last budget?
Um, it was in respect to a study for sixty-
Traffic light, yeah, to put in the hills.
Yes, it was a traffic signalization, and also, uh, we would have incorporated into that some type of crosswalk. And again, this was a fifty-fifty split with the village of Willowbrook. I know we cautioned the city council back in, I believe, two thousand twelve or two thousand thirteen, the warrants, uh, or the counts did not justify a traffic signal at the time. Will they this time? Unknown, and, and I don't have that cost in front of me this evening, but I believe the city's cost, uh, Brian, I don't know if you recall, was it seven thousand?
I think it was about half of fifteen thousand, if I'm not mistaken, they're about seven-
Did we choose to fund that this year?
No.
We chose not to fund it?
It was two separate, there wa- there was that funding, and then there was a separate amount being requested for just this study, um, that Lauren's mentioned.
Okay.
And, and if I'm, if I'm saying this right, the one that Lauren's talking about is from the K-L-O-A?
Correct, law, yes.
And that's, um, five thousand, I believe.
Correct, and that was ba- and that was for the study to determine what type of treatment would be the optimal, uh, for the city of Darien.
Is, uh, is Willowbrook proceeding with the study?
Unknown at this point, we didn't release any information back to-
Okay, so Lauren, the, the possibility is, I mean, we just couldn't fund it this year. Uh, the possibility is, I'm sure Willowbrook will bring it back again, uh, for us to contribute to a study, would you, would you think?
Well, not this year.
No, not, I'm, I'm talking about in the future, not this year.
They may, they may, I, I don't know what their intentions are at this point, so we're just waiting for the-
Because they, we all need to know the, the traffic, uh, issues, to know if it warrants.
Well, the other issue that came up, I believe, wasn't it because of the construction on Route eighty-three, there was potentially more traffic there this year?
That's true, yeah, that's true.
I thought that came up when we were discussing that at the budget thing.
So, I guess my point to you would be, uh, it, it is something that possibly could be discussed in the future if and when we go into this, uh, study with Willowbrook for a traffic signal at sixty-seventh and Clarendon Hills Road.
Cause Dan, it looks like there's striping there already on the east side running north-south.
Correct.
So it's not like a formal, you know, probably identified crossing, but there is, you know, from, if Google Earth is right, you would just, you would have to-
You see something on the pavement?
Yeah.
I go through the intersection every day.
Yeah, it's painted white, there's a-
There's different types of crosswalks.
The, the stop bars are, are there for east and west.
Yeah, but it, you can see that it, the, the white striping goes right on, you know, right on each end of our, uh, whatever that red stuff is that makes it, um, ADA or, you know, what do we, what, what those, those-
Oh, the ramps, the ramps?
It's truncated, truncated to-
Right, so it's right there, so I mean, it looks like it goes, it's like a crosswalk.
It almost looks like it's a crosswalk already, is what you're saying.
Yeah, it, it, it's just painted, it's painted white, but that's only this way, you're not crossing Clarendon Hills Road from east to west.
Right, it's to cross sixty-seventh Street.
Yeah, that's to cross sixty-seventh Street.
And I do believe, I mean, just from my exposure at that corner, I think that in the future, as you look at this, in the least, you know, expensive way to do it, I think if there was even something as simple as a crosswalk there, that when a person sta- I don't, you know, a person's standing there waiting, it gives you the right to then cross. I mean, as it stands now, I see myself and other neighbors who just stand there, and you wait for cars who are kind enough to stop and give you the space to cross. So I think something really in, as, as inexpensive as possible there, I think would help solve some of that problem.
Lauren, I think Dan mentioned with our consultant, um, that that in and of itself would not be warranted. It, you know, sometimes we can put these traffic signals up, and they're not, it's not any safer, and it's a false sense of hope and all that. That's why I think on that particular location, at least preliminarily, the consultant said, well, it wouldn't be, just be a striped, uh, stripe on the str- on the street. There's loading areas at each side, and there's, i- it seemed like it would be a much larger project, but we did not get the stuff.
Particularly because Clarendon Hills Road is a main route, if this was, let's say, sixty-ninth Street, mid-block sixty-ninth Street crosswalk, again, we, we'd be having a different, uh, discussion and dynamics of what could be done or not.
Well, I have a question then, how come in like downtown Downers Grove, they've got those, gosh, all through down, up and down Main Street, you know, where it says, they've got a, the little sign, it's a crosswalk, and it said it's, it's like state law requires that they stop for pedestrians and the cross-
Well, you still have to build those to standards, what we're saying is the standard on Clarendon Hills Road, our consulting's telling us that standard's much more elaborate than maybe what Downers did. So when Downers puts those up or any communities, there should be some kind of study they did to meet the, the federal regulations for traffic control.
You guys have slower speed limit in downtown Downers than you do on Clarendon Hills Road.
So there's just a lot of different criteria, and I, and I respect what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm just curious, what, what law is that, that they cite specifically? And it, you know, I run into that in like college campuses, too.
Well, the city of Chicago is very notorious for that, um, and you, soon as you hit the downtown areas in these neighborhoods, um, you're gonna see crosswalks, and it's basically the law.
Well, Dan, the manual for Uniform Traffic Control, there, there's a book that, and I think that's-
M-U-T-C-D, correct, Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices.
The, the only other thing I had thought of when Dan and I talked about this and I read Lauren's email was, sometimes we'll do this if there isn't, I guess, a different example, but when the city talked about treating, um, one of our detention basins for weeds, we said, well, we better look at all the detention basins, and when we did a traffic study years ago, we said, well, we better look at all this, all the areas. The one thing about this is, you know, we haven't looked at this in other areas, so there's parks and schools and libraries. I, again, not as relevant to this one, but it's something-
How, we talked about, you know, like Seventy-Fifth and, I mean, Eighty-third and Lamont Road.
Yeah, there, there, there is a number of these that would probably come up if the city was seriously looking at additional traffic regulations. It probably, you know, I would suggest that Dan and I would have to look at something on a larger scale, because I, I don't wanna neglect any-
Correct.
Because either we didn't hear about it, or because we talked about it and didn't fund it before. So we might, this might be a little bit larger project, just for the council to consider.
It's time to resurrect the K- uh, KLOA report to find out what was covered.
Well, we've done, we, we've pretty much finished that report, and, and with that report- Well, we've done, we, we've pretty much finished that report and, and with that report a number of years ago-
Are you saying implemented?
Well, we, well, we implemented it or we didn't implement certain things. There was a number of things that KLOA recommended that the, some of the residents in that particular area didn't like, so we didn't rec, we didn't implement those.
Like removing signs, yeah.
Removing, there was some additions, but we didn't look at, we, we kind of looked at things that we knew might be a problem or request. We didn't at that time take a look at like every park in town, every school, every, every place people may congregate or walk to determine if there should be now crosswalks in.
Okay.
So, that, we, that would have been outside of the scope of what we looked at at the time.
All right.
And just as a quick note, if you recall, when the rolling old subdivision of Long Manning Road was up being in for review, one of the things that the staff requested was for a crosswalk to be placed, same, almost the same situation, close to same speed or the same speed limit. And the consultant came back and said, without additional treatment, they would now recommend having the new subdivision cross to, across the roadway. So, we're faced with a similar situation in another part of town is my point.
We'd, we'd have to be very specific in, in our criteria to give KLOA instructions for another study.
Is that intersection on Clarendon Hills Road, is that shared with Darien and Willbrook? How does that-
No, I'm sorry, which one? 67th?
Yeah.
Yes. There's two jurisdictions there from a law, from law enforcement standpoint.
Lauren, I, we can't give you an answer tonight, but you can see that we, we, it's resurrected a few issues for us.
No, and I appreciate it.
But I do, may I have a question? I think that Alderman Belkey asked and Lauren asked was, could the city put that money for the mid-block study back in? So, that specific question, the city council will answer tonight in terms of approving the budget with or without it.
Okay.
And the amount is five thousand just to be, right?
Oh, wait a minute. That's, that's, that's just for 67th and Clarendon Hills Road?
No, 67th and Clarendon Hills Road is, I believe, seventy-five hundred and the other one, which is independent, back to Lauren's cases, I believe, five thousand dollars. I'd have to double check that.
Yeah, I would have to look into the actual budget. So, it's in there, though. The amount should be in there, but in the description, but a zero in the funding line.
All right. So, may I ask a simple, a simple question? And is it, no, it would be in a different budget. Truck 108 was on the, was on the warrant tonight for purchase for a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. It was in budget 2015, 2016 fiscal budget. We budgeted a hundred ninety for it. That's a five thousand dollar cost savings. Would we be able to take something among those lines and utilize it for this?
Well, the, the money, if we knew the amount in the budget now, even though it might have, we might have budgeted one ninety, now that we've gotten close to the fiscal year, we should have put in, as long as we had that number, that exact number should be in there. So, our fund balance is already contemplating the savings of five.
Okay. Plus, I believe you have the striping and some ancillary costs. Don't we, Dan, that go along with it?
Correct.
After having acquired that.
True. Yes, there's a seventy, hundred dollar cost that's additional to that.
Okay, so we'll be discussing the, this, these additional fundings. There's two of them? Well, no, we're not going to do the Willbrook one. We're not going to do that one, just the five thousand. Okay.
I want to confirm it. I think that is five thousand dollars.
Okay, so we'll be discussing that when we get to, under new business, the approval of the budget.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All righty, so we're on the subject of old business.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
For the sake of the two gentlemen who are here from Mount Carmel, they're in the, on the consent agenda. They've been waiting a long time. Could we possibly do the-
I'll, I'll reverse it and do the consent agenda first.
Since these two items will be more of a discussion, why may they-
It sounds like, yeah.
Make them wait longer.
Okay, all right. We'll, I'll follow up on that, that suggestion. We will move old business behind our consent agenda and I would like to read all of the items that are on the consent agenda for the viewing audience. On our consent agenda this evening, we have a motion granting a waiver of the Raffel license for Darien 61's educational foundation. The next item is a motion to waive, waive the license, Raffel license for the Darien Chamber of Commerce. I forget what event that was. What event was that for? Oh, the Chuen Q? The Bruin Chue. Okay, that's it. Okay. The next item is a motion to approve an ordinance approving a major amendment to the final plan development and final plan of subdivision for the, for 8433 Bailey Row, which is the National Shrine of St. Therese. The next item is a motion to approve an ordinance amending Title III, Chapter III, Section 3-3-7, classifications of licenses and fees, which is to remove any open, open licenses from the, from approval. And the motion, the next item is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract extension for our 2016 street sweeping services with Illinois Central Sweeping in amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. And this item is pending approval of the city council budget. And all the items that I'm going to read later, next, are also pending approval of our budget. The next motion is a resolution to authorize the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract extension with Rags Electric for the annual 2016-17 street light maintenance, which is the second year of a three-year contract. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to accept a proposal from Lake Shore Lighting for the purchase of LED street light heads at a cost not to exceed one hundred eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to accept the revised unit pricing from Rags Electric in amount not to exceed fifty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty for the removal of the existing street light heads and the installation of new LED fixtures as they relate to our city's LED street light retrofit project. And the next item is the motion to approve authorizing the sale of personal property of the city of Darien. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for the 2016 roadside ditch maintenance program with, with Scorpio Construction in an amount not to exceed two hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. The next item is a motion to approve the, a contract for our 2016 contract, concrete sidewalk apron curb and gutter removal replacement program with Mondi Construction in an amount, well, we don't have the amount, but in waiving the seventy-five dollar permit fee application to our residents that participate in the program. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for the 2016 street maintenance project between the city of Darien and Schroder Asphalt per the following schedule of pricing. I'm not going to read all of that. Okay. But the total amount is one million, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars and four cents. And finally, the last item is a motion authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for a five, five various fertilizer applications with True Green in an amount not to exceed two thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars for the, okay, that is for the 2016 landscape fertilization services at roadside, rights-of-way and medians on 75th Street and Plainfield Road. With all of those items, do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Marqueses. The roll, please.
Wait, could I, could I ask a question?
Not on consent agenda. Did you want, since we didn't have much discussion, do you want, do you want to remove something?
No, I don't want to remove it. I was just asking for a clarification on the item G, on the LED street lighting.
Go ahead.
Because of the DCO grant, so it looks like, if I'm doing the math right, the, we'd get almost half of the funding from grants after the fact. The two hundred forty-two thousand, we'd get back a hundred and thirty if we got the clean, Illinois Clean Energy money, which has been approved and is not being held up by the state, but the one, one hundred and five thousand dollars-
Is being held up.
Is being held up. My, my question is, if we move forward, do we, without that, do we already have preapproval? So, if we do the work and the state releases the funding, are we compromising ourselves by doing the work ahead of that?
Yes and no. And I hate to answer it that way. First of all, let me clarify, the first one from the Illinois Clean Energy Act is twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, there's no strings attached.
That's done. We have to spend a certain amount first. On the second portion of it, obviously, the governor didn't sign the budget by March 31st. Since it hasn't been signed, I'm not sure where the state is going at this point. But when the budget is signed, this grant will have to be reapplied for. As it's reapplied for, it's my understanding that we are the first contenders on this. Again, there's no guarantee that we will get this, this money.
Is this a project that we can put off?
You'd lose the twenty-five thousand.
We'll lose the twenty-five thousand. I know that we've also negotiated with the pricing between the vendors and there's another, and the installer and the manufacturer. There's a payback, I believe it was seven point three years, what I'm not looking at is my notes at this point.
The payback, Dan, is the decrease cost to us for energy.
Well, energy and maintenance, because LEDs have a much longer life.
In other words-
Well, we have, we have budgeted the expense and we have budgeted revenue in that. So, if this project proceeds now and we didn't get the revenue, that would be, the capital projects fund would be, would be missing that revenue.
The revenue from the grant.
Correct.
Which is a hundred and five thousand dollars.
The other thing is, we're going to cut down our maintenance because with LEDs, we won't be going out and replacing.
Right, right. It's, it's operational savings, energy and maintenance.
So, it's, it's advantageous for us to go through with this.
That was really at issue why Dan brought this forward, because we didn't want to risk losing the twenty-five. So, if you waited, you knew you lost the twenty-five and you still weren't, we weren't sure about the hundred and five.
Correct.
So, this was our attempt to at least try to get the twenty-five.
It appears that there's two hundred and fifty-five thousand in the budget for this, though. Is that correct?
Correct, and that's been reduced. Go ahead.
Okay, two forty-two, eight forty.
We had some contingencies in there too. Again, let me pull them.
Sorry.
I mean, it's a little more complicated now, I think, with all these questions. Now, I'm going to, I want to look up some, the revenue and things, but it's up to you, Mayor. I mean-
Yeah, can we do it after the fact? Can we remove it from the?
You already had a motion, right?
We have a motion. Is it a case of just getting answers that you'll be satisfied?
I mean, I support the program, so I'm not, it's not that, I'm not going to vote against it.
Okay, then let's not, let's just get the answers for, and let's just go ahead with the, the vote on the consent agenda.
I have a question.
You can get her more answers.
We're going to get more answers. Just wait.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion? We, oh, we already have the motion to approve and second it. All right, the roll, please.
Kenny.
Aye.
Marqueses.
Aye.
MacIver.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Six ayes, one absent.
All items have been approved. Let's go back to, gentlemen, you do not have to stick around. The item has been approved. Thank you.
If you could leave those boards, that'd be appreciated. I'm not sure if you could leave them or not. Would like to put them upstairs.
Let me take them back with them and, because they haven't seen them yet.
Okay, very good.
We can certainly get them back to you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, what's going to get more discussion? Okay, let's go back to old business. And item A is a motion to remove from the table a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the private property development storm water management assistance policy for an additional funding level two for our rear yard drainage assistance program. Do I have a motion to remove from the table? Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Belkey. The roll, please.
Belzak.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Marqueses.
Aye.
MacIver.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Six ayes.
And let's, the next is a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the private property development storm water management assistance policy for an additional funding level, level two, for the rear yard drainage assistance program. Do I have a motion to approve?
Wait, could we discuss this before the motion?
No, no, we would discuss, after the motion's made, then we can do the discussion. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marqueses, seconded by Alderman Belkey. Discussion.
All right. Okay, I think that it's important for the viewing audience in particular, given the fact that, you know, in general, I think if people didn't watch the budget meetings and they're not really paying attention the fact that, you know, one of the residents did come forward, Mr. Christensen, to talk about, you know, the concerns regarding the taxes that are built, the increased costs and taxes that are being built into this budget. I think it's important for people to understand, yes, it's a very extensive process that, that the council, and mostly, I wasn't able to attend many of those meetings unfortunately this year. But this particular item is related to the city spending taxpayer money on private property improvements. And I think it's, you know, I think it should be explained what, what the city is proposing here before they vote on it because I think that it is wrong for the city to overstep and, and make these kinds of improvements on, on private property at the cost of taxpayers to benefit a very small number of residents, less, you know, less than a handful.
I guess my question to you, and I, this is a clarification I need. Are you against the levels, the new level that was created, or are you against rear yard drainage assistance in general?
Well, actually, now that, you know, it was really the level that drew my attention to this program. That being said, I think that when it comes to private property improvements for a small amount of, of residents, I think that if we want to have programs, I think we have to have programs that offer equitable opportunities for a, a larger number of residents. So, for instance, the improvements that we have now, the city negotiates rates for concrete work. And so, we pass that negotiated rate on to residents so that they can make improvements on their driveways or their sidewalks. We negotiate rates for planting trees and so we, as part of the bids, the, the bids come in with rates for residents to actually take advantage of planting trees on their properties. I really think that this program should be redeveloped to be something similar so that the city isn't, you know, in this case, up to twenty-eight thousand dollars to improve one single resident's property. I think the city shouldn't be doing that. I think that I agree with figuring out ways to help people improve their private property and using the city's buying power to do that. But I disagree with, you know, in this case, budgeting seventy thousand dollars when we're talking about, you know, crosswalks where people are going to the, to the park, you know, potentially, you know, and we're worrying about that five thousand dollars. I mean, in general, there's things in the budget that, you know, when we're increasing taxes in a, in a year like this, we should be really looking hard at how we're approaching, how we're spending taxpayer money and how we can benefit, you know, a, a larger net, you know, spreading the, the opportunities across the city so more people can, can improve their properties. More people can take advantage of, you know, ways to improve their drainage on their property. So, I think this is, this, this large increase made me think about this program in general. I think that, you know, we've had it for a while and a lot of people have had an opportunity to take advantage of it, but I think it should be something similar to the other ways we improve private property in the city.
I think Alderman MacIver makes a very valid point about negotiating rates. I mean, we, we, Scorpio has become a really go-to contractor for us for, and they, they really understand what we're doing with our, our drainage ditch program.
But this is for the rear yards. He, he's too big for the rear yards.
But her point is-
Yes.
To, to have a situation where we actually do bidding on behalf of residents. But Alderman Belkey, I think you have your hand raised.
Right. I wanted to give a little more flavor to the background of this as well. So, the program that we're talking about here is not a new program per se. It's something that the taxpayers have always supported and been putting money into. What the difference is, is that it has opened up to a new level so that, that the city isn't capped at five thousand, which it was in the past. So, the, the way it also came about, besides the example that Alderman Marqueses has given us, stems back years and years ago where there's a particular resident on 68th Street who basically described to me, first time I came on board at the council, is that she lives in a sinkhole. who basically described to me, first time I came on board at, at the council, is that she lives in a sinkhole. So we've been back and forth, this is now several years, of trying to help her figure out a plan on how she can, you know, get out of this nightmare that she's living in with her, with her water problems, that are all going on to her one resident. So in this case, it's something that she, she can't really spend money to fix if the problem's not gonna go away. Also, it's a problem where it, she's not gonna be able to sell her home, okay? So now you got residents stuck with a property that's not only gonna go downhill and look, look like it, but she's not gonna be able to get out of it either. So the other alternative, too, could be, hey, the city can come along and buy the property for a certain amount of fair market value, and leave it as wetlands or, or something like that, which we're not about to do, right? So the idea here is to help individuals improve their properties, and to wanna be able to have resale value on the properties. And the way that you can control something like this is by setting the budget amount to an amount that's acceptable. So it's not that it's this out-of-control thing. You can control it with the amount of money you, you set towards it. And to Alderman, your point before, when we had this discussion, if, if the residents don't get it this year because of the budget constraints, and they have to wait five years, two years, whatever the number is, it's better that they get it at all than, than have, you know what I mean? It's better that they get it, they know that it's coming down the road as a, as a long-term plan, as opposed to not having it at all. So that was one of the points that we, we brought up before. So I guess I wanna just present it in a way that, you know, it's not the program, per se, maybe, that you're against. And Dan would be involved with the budgeting of what that particular resident needs. And if there's some pricing that can go into a lower amount because of the connections that you have and the resources you have, that's, that's all good. Also, what the program allows is for somebody to independently get their own budget, get their own estimate of how much it might cost to fix their problem. And that's something that the city would have to be involved in, is a joint effort, but it's something that we would allow the, the residents to have flexibility on.
Well, I, I think you made a key point there. You, you, when you use the word, it's, it's their problem. So this isn't, these, what we're talking about are not problems that are, are caused by the city's drainage system. Because we're addressing those with the ditch program and with other programs that we have in place, that are on public property. You know, I mean, there's, this is, you have one example of a very, I, it sounds very serious and, you know, unfortunate for that one resident, but to, to have a city fund that one resident, it's just, I, I, I just, I can't believe we're even, you know, putting the, the council in this position.
Well, I agree that there, there's more than one, though, so to your point. There's at least three with some very, very hard problems. You've seen some come in and speak about it. And at one of those, after the meetings, you were the one that helped direct the, the program to the municipal to come up with a solution. And at that time, you said you didn't have a problem with helping people, it was just a matter of the scale that you didn't like.
Well, right, right.
So that's what we were tasked to do, is create the scale.
Right, and I, I appreciate, like, you know, the, the amount of work that went into this, but my, what I think it brought attention to, like, a light bulb went off. When we, what was our previous funding limit on this?
Five thousand.
No, in total.
Thirty-six thousand.
Yeah, so we've, we've, okay, so, yeah, so now we've gone from thirty-six thousand, and we're funding up to five thousand dollars, so, you know, that, that's quite a few residents that could have taken advantage of that, to seventy thousand, of which one resident could get funding up to twenty-eight thousand and change. So that's a whole different thing. And once I started thinking about that, I'm like, why are we even doing a program like this, this way? We should be doing, you know, we should come up with a program. I'm not saying that we shouldn't. We should come up with a program that is a way to help residents that have these problems. And it could be, I don't know, they could be getting water in their basements. Maybe it's not on their property. Maybe they've got seepage that just perpetually goes in because the water table's so high. You know, there's probably residents with a lot of different issues that they have with their home, existing residences and their private properties, that maybe there's, the city can figure out ways to bring favorable contracting rates, or whatever the case may be. But I think this is wrong. Especially when, when you have, you know, someone like a resident come out and point out the fact that we are raising water, we're raising fuel, we're raising food and beverage, and then we're talking about something like this. It's, you know.
Is there any other, other items, any other questions from the, from the Alderman?
Well, I think if anybody's watching this, I just want them to know. The city's pay, the city could pay up to twenty-eight thousand three hundred, but the resident's still paying. I don't want, I don't want people to misconstrue that the city's gonna pick up the entire cost. Yes, the, the, the extreme would be twenty-eight thousand three hundred. But the, the resident's still picking up a large percentage of that project. We're not, we're not giving anybody a freebie here. We're just assisting that resident in getting that project done. So I, I just wanted to clarify that, so people understood that.
Right, kinda like the fifty-fifty, you know, we, we pick up fifty percent of, right, the, the cost of Parkway trees. You know, for people to, you know, but that's across the city. And so.
Any other, any other comments?
You know, I'm.
Hold on, you started.
But you're on the committee, you know more about it than I do, so. On the same way with Sylvia, and I, last summer, I had my rear yard drainage. And I wrote a check to the city during for three hundred and thirty-three dollars, and two of my three neighbors, you know, joined the program. And, you know, I didn't think, I didn't think nothing of it. I always hear Dan talking about how great the project is, and I went ahead and did it. And then when we, then we came up, like, with Sylvia's talking about it, I never realized it, and the light bulb went on for me as well, when I heard, when I heard the numbers, and, and on private property. And then we're talking about raising taxes on, you know, gas and water, and I just, at some point, it just, as much as you don't wanna make the vote, and I, I'd say right now, if I had enough money in my checking account right now, I'd write a city, a check to the city during for all my neighbors for that rear yard drainage project, because I'm about to vote no, and I'm gonna look like a hypocrite doing it. I talked about it before during the work session, as if there is a possible way of maybe putting some kind of five-year, you know, loan, no-interest loan back to the resident to, to get their, to project. So if, if, it, for example, if the city, instead of going twenty-eight thousand dollars, went twenty-five thousand dollars, cap it at that, and then let the, let the resident, you know, pay five thousand dollars a year, no interest for over, for over the next five years, as Alderman Belkey said, put some kind of lien on.
Well, they, they do have, you know, that's just, that, that would be going back to the drawing board with this, or any other kind of program. I mean, there are programs in other municipalities where there is, you know, a, you know, I think it's actually implemented in their property tax. So they, there's a long-term loan for some major project, and it's basically, you know, those, those particular residents pay more on their property tax every year in order to pay back that, that loan. And I think that way, if they move, it stays with the property until it's paid off. So there are other things, but it's, like I said, it's not this program. It's going back and reevaluating, maybe, like I said, maybe how the city looks at helping residents improve their properties to make Darien, you know, better, our, our, you know, our resale values go up, so they actually match with the, you know, the, the county charges as for her. And, but, like I said, it's not, it's not this. And in particular, I mean, in, you know, we're talking about the state, and we didn't even talk about the state of Illinois. I mean, we still are at risk, you know, right now. I mean, every, every week, there's, there's articles, you know, this one's, you know, Illinois parents don't wanna send, you know, commit their kids to Illinois colleges and universities because of the uncertainty of the state. So, you know, that, we're not even, we're just assuming and hoping that we get what we're supposed to get, but if we don't, what's the hit on that, Mike?
Million.
No, it depends what they're proposing. What they proposed last year would be about a million dollars.
So we, you know, so right now, our, our budget doesn't anticipate that million-dollar hit.
Correct.
So.
Any other discussion? Alderman, uh, Treasury Corin.
I might as well chime in here. I, I really appreciate Neil coming out tonight. I, I wish more residents would do that, and I wish they would get involved in the budget process at an earlier stage. Unfortunately, a lot of the attention, we don't get a lot of attention on it until somebody's got a particular issue that comes up. And then all of a sudden, well, nobody wants their ox gored, as we've been finding out, as we've gone through this budget process. If you recall, the first budget meeting, I did mention that things were going to be challenging this budget season. And I threw it on you, the Alderman, you know, because I, I really don't get to vote on these types of things, to, to go out and meet with your constituents and decide what are the critical projects in your area, what do you wanna make sure is funded? I mean, I think we all agree that public safety and the police is very important. I think we all believe that a lot of the public works, the, the ditch projects, the roads and those things, and the sidewalks, and those things are all important. I think we're pretty much all in agreement on that. And then we went through the budget process, and we did very little, to be honest with you, in my mind. Not that there's a lot we can do. We have chipped away at a, a few little things, a thousand here and a thousand there. But nowhere does it come to the point of making up for all of that, so we really didn't have a choice. And, I mean, I think you did the responsible thing. We do need to raise revenue, assuming that you feel that what we've presented are the, the core base projects in our budget. My mind, and this issue, as well as several other issues, though, in your mind, does this additional seventy-two thousand dollars raise to the level that it is definitely a core project for the city that all residents should be paying for? As Alderman MacIver indicated, it benefits so few residents, and there are other things, other needs with this woman this evening, that needs a crosswalk, and we're talking about five thousand dollars there. Sounds like a small amount, but again, what are our core projects? And I think we've gotten away from that. I tried emphasizing that at the first meeting. I think we've gotten away from it, and we've done nothing since then but add to it for particular reasons. We took away at first, and then we've been adding, and I think we're gonna have some more discussion about adding when we get to the budget this evening. So I'm gonna have this, this same concept running through. But have you, as Alderman, gone to your constituents and found out that, hey, yes, this is what I would consider a core project, and I'm willing to pay more in whatever kind of taxes for it? And I challenge you, have you done that? And if you have, and, and you're happy with it, then you, you get to vote, obviously, however you're comfortable. But that's my input on it.
Alderman Belzak.
Well, we're not adding seventy-two thousand, we're adding thirty-six thousand, because this has been in the budget for as long as I've been an Alderman, and many years before that. It has benefited a great deal, a great many residents, and I don't see why we keep looking at a worst-case scenario. The best-case scenario is you have six people, and it's a ten thousand dollar project, and everyone's happy, and it, it increases, everyone involves the value of their property. And when someone else's property goes up in value, my property goes up in value. And when that happens, it's good for everyone in Darien. I think this is a good project for Darien. Now, if we wanna get into discussion about the dollar amounts that we're putting into it, or do we cap at not fifty thousand, but thirty thousand? Those are something that we can do, so that if people are concerned that one individual will get a gigantic windfall on this, I think those are other options that we can look at. But I think it's a good project for the city. I think it, it definitely benefits people. And, and in the scenario where the, the gentleman that was on Ironwood who was here, what was the numbers on his project? It wasn't?
I believe it was seventeen thousand.
That's what I was gonna say, seventeen thousand. And his was a really bad project, where he had three houses pouring water into his backyard. He's not gonna fix it. He's not going to, unless we help him. So I think it's a, it's a, it, it's something that will make everybody's house on his block more valuable, because he's not gonna put money into his house, and I don't blame him. So I, I was definitely want it in the budget, whether we wanna still discuss whether we wanna put seventy-two thousand instead of thirty-six, that's a different story. And if we wanna cap the amount that we're gonna put on these things, that's also a different story. But I think restructuring it the way we talked about it, we're making it a percentage, means, makes more sense and it's fairer, because we have had different projects with different dollar amounts, and just by the unluck of having trees in the easement, instead of not having trees in the easement, the project gets more expensive. But the people all have the same problem. So I'd like to see it stay in there, and I'd like to support this. And again, if we wanna talk about a different dollar amount and a different cap, on how much the city's gonna go in, I'd certainly be wanting to talk about that as well.
Legal question, we're gonna have to turn to you, since you, you have a, you have an idea of what, how this would be handled. If this were defeated this evening, it could go back to committee for reconsideration of different proposals.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay.
I wanted to add a few more things. You know, just, you know, quality of life is very important for residents, whether it's one, or three, or twenty. I mean, everybody deserves to have a good quality of life here. Property values are very, very important to all of us. We all share that. I wanted to kind of look at it in another way as well, where there's several residents in my ward that suffer all day long, okay? There, there's been so much history on suffering before I even came on board, where Darien, as a whole, jumped in to help so many people, and that was by creating these basins, too. So, you know, they had to buy properties and, you know, take care of the solution for, for, maybe it only affected five people, but the basin now, you know, helped alleviate that, and the city pitched in for that. I think we're all in it together. I hate to, like, act like we're singling out certain people. They happen to be on, the unfortunate ones. But I think everybody deserves support to have their property values, and people care that they're suffering.
And just to add, people would say, there are people who'll say, well, why am I paying for ditch projects, because I don't have a ditch in front of my house? And my response is, but you have curb and gutter, and we redo your streets every X amount of years, and we, we'll fix your curb and gutter every X amount of years. So what you get in that regard, these people get in terms of their ditch projects. And in fact, when we fix their ditch, we get forty years out of that ditch, where we gotta come back and do your road every X amount of years. So I, I try to tell people there's always a balance. Tom made a good point. You know, if we've had this program for, let's say, ten years.
Oh, much longer.
At least.
And we've, and we've done five to ten a year, well, we've done over a hundred people's backyard in terms of rear drainage. So it's, it's not that we're doing five this year, we should just look at it in terms of five this year. We should look at it, the fact that over the last ten years, we've probably fixed over a hundred backyards or assisted people. And that's a lot of improvement that we've been involved in. And so I, I, I don't see how you can really sit back and, and say, is it a, is it a core service? There are a lot of things in this city that some people benefit from and other people don't, but they all pay their taxes to support those services, okay? And I don't think we can sit back and say, because the east side of Darien needs ditch projects, you know, we, we, or in my area doesn't, we're not gonna support it. No. I, I don't have ditches really in my area, but I support ditch projects. And so that's how I look at this. I have a, I have a issue with my side yard, but I don't qualify for this. It's not a rear yard. It's a side yard, and I have to fix that myself. That's, that's my problem. That I acknowledge. But these people are people that have serious issues, and we've been able to help them out, so that's why I would support this. And I agree with Tom. If you're gonna, if you wanna talk about the seventy-two thousand, then talk about the seventy-two thousand. But the thirty-six thousand, I think, was critical.
Can we move on to a vote?
Well, I mean, it feels like point counter point. I mean, I think, correct me if I'm wrong. We're talking, the difference that I'm talking about is private versus public property. It's issues that the city's responsible for, like stormwater management, versus problems that occur on somebody's property because the neighbor's draining their sump pump your way, or you change, you know, something changed with respect to the elevation change, or, you know. I mean, it's, it's the, it's the, the line where we cross, making improvements, you know, when they, when their property value goes up and they make more money on their property, are we getting paid back, you know, for, for that increase in value? I mean, it's, I think it's, the city's overstepping its bounds. And when we bumped it up to this level, it made me think, rethink this program of how, like I said, I'm not opposed to coming up with ways to help residents improve their properties. But it, I, I support something that is equitable across the city. Like the, you know, the, like I said, the concrete program, or the tree program. I mean, those are things that anyone could pick up the phone and take advantage of. And, I mean, think about senior citizens, you know, they don't have money, they're sitting at home, maybe their, maybe their roof is falling off, falling apart, because they can't afford to buy a new roof. Are we gonna start, you know, getting into the roofing business? Or, like I said, the basement water issue, or, you know, the backup sewer system? I mean, it just, you know, it's private property. And once we cross that line, I think we're doing a disservice to everyone who's gonna be paying higher taxes, paying more for services, and core projects that, you know, may or may not be in the budget, because, you know, here's, here's something that shouldn't be handled the way it is.
I would like to move on to a vote, then. The roll, please.
Marques.
Thank you. I just, by, by the way, thank you for all of your comments. It was very appreciated, and the way everyone has handled the, the discussion, too. Thank you. Go ahead.
Marques.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Kenny.
No.
MacIver.
No.
Shower.
Aye.
Four ayes, two nays. Four ayes, two nays, and one absent.
We didn't have to have a supermajority for this. Okay. The motion has been approved. Let's move to the new business items. The item A is consideration of a motion to approve our 2016-17 budget. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzek. And of course, I'm going to bring up my two issues. You received a letter from the two mayors. We could probably send out a direct connect notice to all of our residents not to go to the fireworks, because we're not paying for it. I guess that would be an option, but I think it's disingenuous of us to remove that funding when we know our residents are going to that function.
Are their residents not coming to Darien Fest?
Pardon me?
Are the Woodbridge and Downers Grove residents not attending Darien Fest?
I don't understand the question.
Well, they're not helping us fund Darien Fest or our parade.
How do you know they're not attending?
How do you know they're, I mean, I know they're not helping assist. I'm saying they probably are attending, particularly the parade.
Well, you're carrying this way too far. Each one of those towns have their own fest. Are they asking us to contribute to them? They're just asking...
Woodbridge doesn't have a Fourth of July parade.
No, I'm talking about fests. You just brought up the issue, are they contributing to our fest?
Downers has taken their fest private. They don't do it with public funding any longer.
That's fine. They used to have it, so, they didn't ask us for funding for it, that's the point. I am saying this, you just said, are they helping us fund all those events in Darien? I have an issue, and we know our residents are attending something, that we are not contributing to it.
And I've made a handful of votes trying to cut mon, trying to save as much money as we can. But I think that when you have two other municipalities that are requesting our assistance in a small magnitude, I think it's in the best interest for the city as a whole, so we can work collaboratively with Woodbridge and with Downers Grove. Darien and Woodbridge haven't always worked, you know, together. There's been some issues along 83rd Street, and some sign issues and everything else. I think this might be a good olive branch. Mike, I agree with you from the dollar standpoint, but sometimes you think you have to spend that money, especially if we can get it back in the long run. I look at it as an investment, working with our neighbors, Woodbridge and Downers Grove, so I'm a yea.
Well, Alderman McGyver, I bet you I know what you're going to say.
Well, I mean, it is a tough budget year. Again, I mean, I'm not going to repeat everything I've said before, and we just spend another 72,000 or whatever, $1,000. I'd rather spend $5,000 on a study to look at creating a safe intersection for children crossing to get to our community park than to spend 5,000, what is it? 5,100?
It's just, yeah, 5,100, I believe.
Yeah, $5,100 for 20 minutes of fireworks that I don't know how many Darien residents attend.
So, this puts a burden on their budgets to have to come up with the extra money?
Well, it's up to them to have it or not have it, you know? I don't go to it, I go to the counties. I go to DuPage County's fireworks display every year, but I don't go to the Downers Grove. But that's me.
Alderman Marques.
I agree with Alderman McGyver. I've always had an issue with spending money on a fireworks show that lasts for 20 minutes. And I think, we made a lot of critical decisions this year in terms of things that we cut out. And this lady came forward tonight and pointed out something that I thought was more important than 20 minutes of a fireworks show. I would rather spend $5,000 on that kind of study than $5,000. And I realize you want to keep goodwill with your fellow communities, and I think that's, but I think we keep goodwill with our community, our fellow communities. I don't think Gina Cunningham or the other ones are going to be upset with us because we don't do this.
Well, they're upset with us, that's why they sent the letter.
Well, then, you know, I'm sorry, we have to approach our budget from a different perspective than maybe they do. And we maybe provide services to our residents that they don't, that we need to be able to support. So, I couldn't, I couldn't support going back and putting that back in.
I think they're raising their gasoline tax also, I think Woodbridge is.
They already had, I think they went up a penny.
Yeah, so, I mean, I would, I would agree with Sylvia, I couldn't support $5,100 for this.
Well, you know, it's...
Are we talking...
We, you know, we put money back in the budget for the Lions Club parade with the argument that, well, it's for the kids. I can't even imagine that the fireworks isn't for the kids, and Darien Fest isn't for the kids. I think we're playing favorites here, and I've got an issue.
Well, Darien Fest is another, I mean, Darien Fest is a fundraiser for the Chamber of Commerce. I mean, at least the Lions Club parade is, you know, the community participates. I mean, the Darien Fest is a moneymaker for the chamber, and I would... Yeah, you weren't here for the meeting, I believe, when they have to rethink all of that, because it's not a moneymaker for them anymore.
Well, let's talk about that, though, because Brian and I, because we get a share of what Darien Fest earns. And last year, after paying us the $2,000, they still earned $20,000. So, they can earn $22,000 out of that, and part of it, Brian and I looked at the numbers, part of it goes for salaries, other things. We can get into the detail, if you want to get into the detail. But they can continue that Darien Fest in exactly the same form they have. And even if we're not picking up that $15,000 extra, they would make less. They wouldn't make 22,000, they'd make 7,000 instead, but that is still a fundraiser for them. And I can differentiate that compared to the Lions, who are doing so. They're not using it to raise money for whatever their purposes are, which are charitable purposes. The Darien Fest, Chamber of Commerce, is not even a charitable organization, it's a not-for-profit.
They give money to all the organizations that help on the fest.
Essentially, it's to promote their business. And as we heard this evening in Citizen of the Year, not even one of their members even participated in the Citizen of the Year.
I believe they did.
But again, they are a for-profit. They made $22,000 last year, even in spite of the fact that they felt they had an off-year.
But isn't the money that they make go back into the city of Darien by exposing more that goes on in the city of Darien with businesses?
Well, it goes on, goes into their till. And what they do with their till, they try to promote the businesses, which are, some are Darien, some are not Darien businesses. A lot of their businesses are outside Darien. I believe she gave us the number, I forget it, last meeting.
I think Tri-State Fire District just became a member, if I remember, serves me correctly.
But I guess the question is, if you have a business that you're putting money into to expose more businesses, aren't you chasing good money after good? I'm not, I'm just throwing that out there.
Well, they can, they can do it, and still be profitable.
That's how I think of Darien Fest, as well as...
Well, now, mind you, if they have good weather for all the days, that's a huge, that's the risks that they're taking with this thing.
Well, and the other, the other thing is, there's, you know, we're just talking Darien budgets, but I believe the Park District takes a nice hit on, you know, everything they have to do to the park.
They don't take a hit, they charge a lot of money to the chamber.
Yeah, but they have to, you know, it comes with the cost of them having to do all the repairs and damage and everything that's done there. So, I mean, that's the other side of the taxpayer.
And it's not that we don't support the Darien Chamber of Commerce, we give them free use of our office upstairs. We also, they sponsor the Darien Dash, I'm sure there's some out-of-pocket there. I'm sure with blocking off the streets and additional police overtime, we've never even discussed any of that. I'm sure there's a few dollars, we've never tried to quantify any of that. So, we do support them, it's not that we don't support them, it's just this one particular thing that is costing us a lot of dollars, and essentially, the profit goes into the chamber's pocket for, again, whatever purpose you feel the chamber...
But hasn't the Darien Chamber always been under the premise for the last 30 years that Darien Fest is one of the ways that they make money for them?
The Darien Fest, I talked to Frank Modelski. Frank Modelski is one of the founding fathers of Darien Fest, 25, 30 years ago. And Frank told me, he says, "When they started Darien Fest, Darien Fest, it was a different motive for starting Darien Fest." It was to promote business within the city of Darien, highlight businesses within the city of Darien. It has changed over the years from that into something else. You know, I know they raised their money, I don't know, maybe Mike knows where they spent that 22,000, I don't. Do they pay salaries out of that 22,000? Do they pay to promote businesses out of that, I mean, I don't know that, okay? So, that aside, you know...
I think they pay fees to the restaurants and wherever they hold their meetings, too. So, I think some of that funding goes into that.
I mean, the comparison with the Lions Club is not fair. Because the Lions Club spends $4,500 to $5,000 to run the parade, and if you would charge the Lions $5,000 for the overtime, that's $5,000 that they're not giving to some other organization within the community.
Are you, are we, how many Lions Club members do we have in the council here?
Just two.
Just two? So, you guys are going to not vote on the budget because money is being given to the Lions Club?
Well, I'm not a Lions Club member, but I can differentiate, and you know how anti-giving money to not-for-profits out of the city budget I am, but I actually support what's been done, and I can contrast it to the Chamber of Commerce. Again, the Chamber of Commerce is doing it for profit, they're having this brew and chew. That's another one of their fundraisers, they have, whatever fundraisers they have. Most of the businesses, your businesses after hours and everything, that's sponsored by the business that's presenting it. They want to do that to expose the other members to their business and try and get more business out of it.
And the city council provides a forum for new businesses to come and promote their business. I mean, that's something, you know, that's been a part of our, you know, meetings as long as I've been on the council. Again, I wish we had, didn't have an issue with funding. I mean, if we, if we were, you know, had the resources, and we weren't asking residents to pay more for, you know, at least three new taxes that we're adding or fees, you know, again...
I thought we added two.
You mean, you were talking about the water, right?
Oh, you're talking water, okay. Water, yeah, that's fees, and then two taxes. I mean, you know, this is, again, I think it's going back to what our treasurer, you know, is talking about, core projects. Is Darien Fest a core project? You know, the two, three days, whatever it is, of a carnival, you know, that benefits a business that basically it's their fundraiser? I just, I don't understand the, you know, what the thinking is here.
Okay, so both of those items, we'll get a letter off to Mayor Cunningham, and Mayor Tully that we will not be supporting the Fourth of July parade.
Well, I don't know, did you, I don't know if everyone feels that way.
I pretty much got the idea everybody's against it. Is that, no? I'm sorry, I should, okay, I'll pull.
I keep saying this from day one, from day one of the budget. Darien Fest, the Lions Club Parade, or however you want to say it, as well as the fireworks, anything that's going to expose the city of Darien in a positive aspect, that can get 10 families to possibly move on in here, is worth every penny to me.
I'll be honest, I don't think Darien Fest necessarily does that.
I bet, that's my own opinion, and Sylvia, that's yours, too, at the same time.
Yeah, right, it is, it's just my opinion.
You know, and like I said, it's one of those situations, for all intents and purposes, it's a positive light. And that's how I keep thinking of it. It exposes the businesses to the positive light, puts money back in the Darien Chamber for whatever the bills it is to expose more businesses down the line, as well as exposes people to come on into Darien and say, "You know what? This is a nice place to live." It's, you know, it's not the numbers that are outrageous, we're talking 50, 60, 70, 80,000 dollars. I get it, I understand, a dollar's a dollar, I got it, okay? But that's how I look at it when I look at these three items.
Alderman Marques, you are not supporting the 5,000 fireworks, that's what I thought I heard you say.
Correct.
Alderman Belkey?
That's correct for me, too, but I would...
You're not supporting it?
Right, I'm not supporting it, but I would like to, you know, as it was brought up in contrast to what we heard from today on the crosswalk idea, you know, that's something that I would like us to consider to put in.
Alderman, I just have four notes here that I think the council can just go in order. And I think, Mayor, you're trying to get the fireworks. I don't know if the Darien Fest itself is included in there, or that one is a no-also, I think there was some question. And then I have the Clarendon Hills Crosswalk, and then I also have the 75th Street Landscaping, because as we're talking about the budget now, we should talk, we should include that or not, and the next item becomes just a flow from that. So, I think the fire, just, I just want to go in order, Tim, I'm sorry, but the fireworks.
Yes, the fireworks, you're not supporting that?
I was supporting it based on the Woodbridge and Downers Grove asking.
I'm sorry, you, yeah, your comments were positive. Alderman Belzek?
I would support it also.
Okay, that's, so we've only got, we've got three.
Three.
We're split, hey! Whoa!
Get the vote again, don't...
I get to vote on this. I get to, talk about lucky days, my gosh.
Well, not to complicate it in here. This is, this is the straw poll to see what's included in the budget. The actual budget, then, will be up for a separate vote.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? So, if you are trying to break the tie among the aldermen for this one item, then as the actual vote comes for the budget, it's six to one, then you wouldn't have that same opportunity. Just so we're clear.
So, we don't know what the other council member will do, so...
It'll be, I mean, the budget's going to be up for a vote tonight. At this point, the way we've done all the budget items so far is, majority of the group there, if they raise their hands, we're putting it in. So, I guess that at this point, to be consistent, we can put 5,000 in there, and then as we get to the vote for the budget, Alderman might want to actually switch the final vote. It's a little complicated, but...
Okay, the fireworks is back in, all right. How about the, Darien Fest is, I believe Alderman Shower, I heard, yes? Well, I don't even count your vote, you're a Lions Club member, okay?
No, actually, I think that's unfair to say that, because I'm not voting as a Darien Lions Club member, I'm voting as a representative of the city of Darien.
No, my point is that you are a Lions Club member, and the budget is including money for the Lions Club.
But the Lions Club is spending money, they're not raising money. There is a difference there, and I, you know, and as I said, it's a charitable organization. You want to charge them $5,700 for barricades, eye in the sky, and overtime, that's $5,700. They don't give to another Darien charitable organization. That's what it causes. And we, the Darien Lions Club spends $4,500 to $5,000 on their parade. They don't ask for anything, they just do it. They could sit back and say, "We're not going to do it," and save $5,000. And they decide not to do it. Now, the chamber's got to sit back and say, "How do we reevaluate Darien Fest in lieu of the fact that we're not going to get the overtime?" Maybe in the long run, Darien Fest will become better because they'll have to rethink it.
Well, you heard the rethinking, they are changing it, they are changing it.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah. Darien Fest, Alderman Belkey?
As written in the budget, which is zero.
Okay. Alderman Kenny?
No.
Alderman Belzek?
No.
Okay, so that's out. All right, then we have the issue of the, the explanation was, we put a number in the budget for the landscaping. It was 84,000?
Correct.
Because we didn't really have an idea of what it was going to come in at. The bids came in now at 107, 107,000.
Should I have 107, 106, 106,000?
I've got it.
107, 265.
107, 265, oh, it's right here. And so, that brings, that would change the number in the budget. What's everyone's thoughts about that?
First question I have, sorry, Madam Mayor, the first question I have, I know we originally were talking about 84,000, we came in at 107, we know we're higher. Is there any special grants or anything that's going on in this situation that we're going to get out of this?
At best, right now, we currently have a project going with the street lighting, and depending on how much restoration is required from the street lighting project, there may be some savings that could be realized from the streetlight project, because they'll be picked up under the proposed landscaping. Is that, is that dollar amount, 3,000, 5,000, 10,000? I can't answer that question right now, it's all due to field conditions and what's going to need to happen to boring, you know, digging, so on and so forth.
Would you support the additional funds, Alderman Shower?
You know, probably, at this point, probably no.
No? Alderman Marques, would you support this revised budget number?
Yes, I would.
Yes, Alderman Belkey?
I have a question. How much are we estimating this upkeep to be each year?
Approximately 5,000.
Okay. My answer is no. I think that nice manicured lawn will look...
I mean, going back to the situation, and this is why I asked this question about grants and everything, are we under the gun to get this thing on the budget for this year? Because I think beautification processes absolutely...
Well, it was a bid by DuPage County, that's the issue.
Yeah, we included, back at the workshop, staff was requested to go back and see if we can include something for a landscape enhancement within the corridor, which we went back to the county. The county basically drew up designs with their consultant, and we included it in the bid. The county included it in their bid process as an all-or-nothing bid tabulation.
So, Ted, are you asking if we could never do this again? Well, I know we can do it again, but the question is, how much higher is going to cost us later on? That's the question.
That's a big question.
Well, regardless of how much, if we said no to this, we still got to go back and replace all the sod, and that's going to be dug up by the lamppost, correct?
That's currently, right.
So, that's going to be a cost.
That's already in a bid, right, Dan? That's in the lighting bid.
Yep, and to, you know, and to respond to Alderman Shower, Alderman Shower speaks to Darien Fest, bringing residents in and putting on a good face, and the fireworks, putting on a good face. Well, how your central city looks puts on a good face. I would rather have residents drive through and see beautiful landscaping and say, "Boy, this Darien really looks nice," than have Darien Fest. this Darien really looks nice than have Darien Fest. I mean, I mean, if you're, you know, you're, you're being a bit hypocritical, Steve, or, not Steve, Ted, because you're saying you're looking for things that enhance how people see Darien, and then you're gonna say no to landscaping.
I don't, I don't understand.
Okay, you said, Alderman, you, Shower, you said no to land this bid, this, this proposal, 107.
And, and to your point, Alderman Marquez, about that situation, about being hypocritical, okay? Here's the situation that goes on with it. We've had a lot of discussion tonight about the budget and everything that goes on with it. I'm not dead set against it in any way, shape, or form. You know how I am. I like beautification projects. The big question is, can it wait a year? That's the big thing. And the biggest thing that goes on with it, if we do wait a year, what's it gonna cost us? So how you take a look at it, it's just the way you approach it.
Alderman Marquez, you are supporting?
Yes, I am.
Alderman, Alderman Belkey is against. Alderman Kenny, supporting?
I'm no. There's been a handful of times where something's come to this council, it's come up with a bunch, a number, and then you turn back around later on and, oh, the vendor, you know, miscalculated this or that, and I think it, it sets a precedent. I, I, you know, I can go for the landscaping at 84,000, I'm not gonna pay 107,000, no.
Alderman Belzak?
Can I ask a question? I like the idea of it, I don't like the cost of it. So that, my question is, this was a bid put together by DuPage. Could Darien put together a bid, maybe on a smaller scale, to have it, to get some bids on doing it themselves or having, having their own people do it? And how difficult would that be?
It's really, I mean, most of the work is already put in place as, I believe this is a follow-up question from the last budget meeting we had. We can, we have the grocery list or the menu, if you want to say, of the plantings. Can we go and put a magical number, or leave a magical number in the budget and say, okay, let's do Plainfield and Cass and 75th Street, and not to exceed 84,000, and go out for these separate bids? And maybe hire three vendors versus one vendor? Yes, there's difference, there's different avenues that we could approach.
And to me, that would make more sense. And it would also make more sense, maybe, if we didn't have, like, this covers, I, I think we talked about it last time, can we do piecemeal it and do, you know, just the 75th and Cass area and the, in the, in the Cass and Plainfield area, but not Adams and down that way? And to me, I'd like to beautify the, the two main corners that we're talking about, but I could live without Adams and Williams. I mean, I, so that's why I'm wondering, does it make sense for us to say no to this and get some, and, and keep the 80,000 in the budget, or what you were saying, pick a number in the budget and keep it there and say, let's spend this much money, get our own people and do it on whatever this gets us?
I like his answer better than mine.
Can we, can we pirate their plan?
Yes.
We, there's nothing that could stop us from using it?
It's public information and we already.
Okay, Alder, okay, you're.
So my vote is no for 107, but I'd like to keep it in the budget for 84, for us to find someone to do it for 84.
Okay, Alderman, Alderman Maciver?
Well, I think Alderman Marquez actually stole my thunder, because, you know, we had this long discussion about, you know, improving the values of properties in Darien for a handful of residents. And here, you have something in the budget that is, you know, the main thoroughfares going in and out of the city, and something we had budgeted that, that's now, what, 23,000 over? So you, you know, that, that's a hard number now, right? The 107?
Yes.
So, you know, in my opinion, I would support this and hope that we could do it for less, like you often do when you find other ways to be, you know, to find things, ways to reduce costs for programs that we have in the city, and cut that rear yard, the, the rear yard drainage by half to make up that deficit. And.
I, I think what you're suggesting is to stick with the 84,000 and go on our own for, for, for.
Well, you know, this is a number you know. I mean, we don't know that when we bid these, these projects that we're gonna come in less than this. We don't know that.
I think, and just if I could speak, what I would probably do is look at the grocery, look at the menu and say, okay, do we want to do X, Y, Z? Go out to some local landscaper, local suppliers and buy the plans directly, and then maybe go on a TNM basis to hire a qualified competent landscaper to install them. I mean, we even have the mulch, which we can provide. It's double ground mulch, unless we want Cypress, Golden, Brown mulch, or red mulch, whatever the case is.
That will fade after a year, wouldn't it?
I'm sorry?
Wouldn't that fade in color?
So my point is that.
It's all gonna fade, no matter what it's, it's.
Yeah, I, I would say that.
You would support the 107,000?
Well, I would, and hope that we could do it for less.
Right. I, well, again.
But I would only support it if we cut that 71,000 back to its original number.
I think with the county contract.
She's a negotiator.
With the county, with the county contractors, different protocols, the chance of savings is very slim, if not.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so we don't have enough for the 107, but I guess the new question is, is there support for the 80, the amount that's currently in the.
Let's leave the 84,000 in the budget?
That's the next.
And see what we can do with it?
Hand raised?
I would support that.
That was already, that was already in the.
All right, okay.
What's, what's in there now?
Yes, leave it in there. Tell, I guess the, send the message to the county, we're not gonna participate.
Yes.
There was a fourth item that you said you had as well.
Crosswalk.
Crosswalk.
Yeah, the Clarendon Hills Crosswalk is the fourth one.
I don't know if, let's see, wait a minute, the $5,000 was going to be just for a crosswalk study?
Yes, mid-block crosswalk study, yes.
And that will tell us what, if any, type of crosswalk is warranted, so.
Is it just the whole city? Because we, we, we got talked.
This is specifically at Community Park, at, the question that came up tonight. This is specifically.
Oh, no, it's not at Community Park, it's 67th and, and Clarendon Hills Road.
But.
No, I'm sorry, but the essence of people getting to Community Park. The, the, this was, this whole came about because people trying to get to Community Park, that's what I meant.
This would allow people from 60 who live on the east side of Clarendon Hills Road, from 67th down to.
All right, so the crosswalk study would be, we would have Chloa, we would have Chloa tell us where to place a crosswalk?
If it's warranted, what type and where it would go, correct, Dan? Basically those three.
Right, and the type of devices.
And that's why, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And the type of devices that would be required.
And we can do all of this for 5,000?
Yes.
Study, a study or.
A study.
It's only a study.
No, we don't know. I mean, it could be $100,000 of light, or it could be very cheap. I don't know what the.
I, I understand that, yeah. All right, all in support of adding that 5,000 for the crosswalk?
For the study? For the, to the community park?
Yep, okay, so put that back, put that in the budget.
Well, maybe if you, you know, soften the blow to those mayors and tell them that we had to use that money for a crosswalk to the park, maybe it won't be so bad.
No, I, I'm not gonna soften the blow at all. Just tell it like it is.
The 5,000 for the fireworks is in the budget.
Got to put it back in. Got to put it back in.
Oh, the fireworks is back in? Oh, okay.
Unless you want to vote no on the budget.
Okay, all right, so. Do we have to amend the budget?
Well, it's, it's, it's approval of the ordinance as amended this evening with these, um, one, two, uh, two changes at this point, the fireworks and the crosswalk.
I mean, the 84,000 was always, always.
Yeah, that's not a change. That would stay what's in there currently.
And the chamber was out originally?
The chamber was out.
Yes, yes, it was out. Okay, so.
The chamber was out, so there's no change.
Oh, the, Darien Fest overtime.
Darien, I'm sorry.
Yes, correct.
All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back, pardon me?
I'm sorry.
One extra 10,000?
No.
Yeah, five for the fireworks.
And five for the crosswalk.
And five for the crosswalk.
I'll go to the motion in second, or, what, is it okay with you both as the, the proposed budget as amended?
Sure.
Okay.
Wait, it also includes the, this, what we vote, what you voted on earlier, the, the, um, the rear yard drainage.
The money for the rear yard is in there separate and apart from the policy. The policy will dictate how the money is spent, which was approved, but the money is, you know, if that policy wasn't approved and that money was still in there, it would still be used for those pri, for the rear yards.
I have a quick question about that. We talked about changing what the city could spend a $5,000 limit to, did we vote that down, or is that still part of that today?
That is, it's, it's staying at the $5,000 approval level.
Okay, so we did change it last time?
Yes.
The, the policy that was presented last time.
We removed that.
Did not include it, the actual policy, it was in the cover memo, and it, so we left it that way, so the, nothing changes in the administrative authority.